Start off by reading this exciting notice. All right, the meeting for which this agenda has been posted will be held pursuant to and in compliance with the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, Section 2.2-3708.2, and state and local legislation adopted to allow for continued government operation during the COVID-19 emergency. All participating members of the Planning Commission will be present at this meeting through electronic means, and all members of the public are welcome to view the meeting at www.fallschurchva.gov/pc and on FCC TV, which is Channel 11 on Cox, Channel 2 on RBN, and Channel 35 on Verizon. Public comments will be accepted electronically until the end of the public hearing. Submit comments via email to plan@fallschurchva.gov. Again, you can submit public comment via email until the end of the public hearing by sending it to plan@fallschurchva.gov. And I neglected to start off by saying this is the Wednesday, July 15, 2020, public meeting of the City of Falls Church Planning Commission. And with that, Ms. Schaefer, can you call the roll?
Here.
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 Yes, I'm here.
All right, thank you for that. I know Mr. Krasner has a work conflict tonight, and that's why he's unable to attend. And a quick reminder for my fellow commissioners and also staff, if you make sure you're muted unless you plan to talk, that will help us avoid any technical problems with echo and things like that, and make it a lot easier for everyone to hear whoever is speaking. So with that, I need a motion to adopt tonight's agenda.
So moved. This is Russ.
All right, can I get a second?
Melissa, second.
All right, we have a motion to adopt agenda and a second. Quick roll call vote, I guess, here is in order. Yes.
Ms. Teetz?
Yes.
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 All right, thank you. Item number four, do we have any petitions for items not on the agenda? Do not, all right? And we do not have a speaker series, which brings us to item number 6A. The first item, actual item, is the 212 East Jefferson subdivision final plat. I assume we have some sort of a, I know we have staff report, do we have some sort of a presentation?
Um, yep. I'm sorry, just gonna, let me kick my kids out of the room.
Sure, understandable. And I know we've seen this before, so I think it's some updates based on our previous comments, and then I expect we'll have a fair amount of Q and A.
Yes, it's gonna be really brief. Sorry, I had set up the iPads and ready to go. It just died, so now I had to entertain them for a minute. So I'll keep it really brief since this is a final plat and the preliminary plat was already approved several weeks ago. So tonight, the commission is requested to consider approval of a final plat for the proposed subdivision of 212 East Jefferson Street. As I just said, a preliminary plat for the proposed subdivision was approved by Planning Commission on May 20. Pursuant to the subdivision code, the applicant has the option to file and obtain preliminary plat approval and seek approval of the final plat in the subsequent action. Approval of the preliminary plat is only valid for six months, and the code requires that a final plat be submitted and approved by the Planning Commission before the plat can be recorded. The final plat must conform to the preliminary plat as approved to the provisions of the subdivision ordinance and the requirements of the commission's approval action during the preliminary approval. With the May 20 approval of the preliminary plat, the Planning Commission included a condition that the applicant provide a deed restriction on the final plat related to demolition of the existing structures on the property. Additionally, the Planning Commission also requested that the area proposed for the private landscape easement be identified on the plat and labeled as such. Both of these items were addressed in the final plat. The final plat is also consistent with the approved preliminary plat and complies with the zoning and subdivision codes. So with that, staff recommends approval of the final plat with the proposed motion this evening. I'm happy to take any questions. I know Mr. Cram, the applicant, property owner, and his attorney, Mr. Lasso, are also in attendance. And that's all I have for the staff report.
All right, thank you for that. I'm pretty sure that we have some questions, which I'm happy to just run down the list and let people ask their questions, but I don't, if the applicant wants to say anything ahead of time, that's fine.
This is Dave Lasso. We may also have the engineer Karen White participating. I know she planned on doing that. We just want to thank the staff for going through this. I know there were some questions raised at the last minute, and the staff has talked to the city attorney and concluded that, I think, as Akita said, the final plat is ready to go. But there may still be questions, and we can certainly address them as the commission asks them. So we'd appreciate tonight getting final approval.
Okay. All right, then I will go to commissioners and just let anyone have any, ask their questions now. And instead of alphabetically, I'm gonna go in the order that they're listed in the Skype attendee, because it's just different. So Ms. Weiss, you're up first, if you have any questions. I know we hashed her a lot of this before. You do not, okay. Ms. Teetz, you're next on my list.
I don't have any questions. I do have a statement, but I'll do that after we make our motion.
All right. Mr. Puentes, any questions?
No.
And Mr. Wadyska?
Uh, no, I do not have questions. We went through this before.
All right, well, great. We don't have any additional questions. I mean, I think I have questions that were sort of the same questions as last time, but I suspect the answer doesn't change.
This is Tim Stevens. I do have a question.
All right, Tim, why aren't you on my low? You're at the very bottom as T10. All right, go, Mr. Stevens.
Uh, yeah, I was just walking by there today on Cherry Street. I see there's a very large oak tree where it looks like the planned driveway would be located. I'm just wondering if the location of the driveway is intended to have that large, it looks like an oak tree removed, or can it be placed such that that wouldn't need to happen?
This is Karen White at Walter Phillips. I think I can address that. I think, well, I guess the answer is there is no real design at this point, so I don't really think there's a final design that would, so I don't know if we could answer that question definitively.
Okay, well, hopefully the location of that driveway can be placed such that that large tree can be preserved.
All right. Well, if we don't have any questions, I guess, does anyone want to make a motion? Come on, somebody. We have a proposed motion in the staff report.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, you'll, you'll go for it, Mr. Puentes?
Yes.
Thank you.
It's a long one. Whereas the proposed subdivision meets all applicable requirements of the city's subdivision and zoning ordinances as they are currently applied and practiced, and the proposed subdivision is generally consistent with the comprehensive plan, now therefore I move that the Planning Commission grant preliminary plat approval of a subdivision plat dated March 9, 2020, of 1212.
Mr. Puentes, I'm really sorry, but I think you're reading off the wrong staff report. That's a, that's a preliminary staff report.
I was just.
Thank you.
All right, do over.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Yeah, I knew we took that phrase out, and I was wondering.
Yeah, when you said that, I started to look at my mouth.
Yeah, that's the, that's the one that got me to rethink.
My apologies.
No worries. Thank you.
Whereas the proposed subdivision meets all applicable requirements of the city's subdivision and zoning ordinances, and is consistent with the preliminary plat approved on May 20, 2020, and whereas the proposed subdivision is generally consistent with the city's comprehensive plan, now therefore I move that the Planning Commission grant final plat approval of a subdivision plat dated May 20, 2020, attachment 1 of 1212, sorry, 212 East Jefferson Street into proposed lots 13B1 and 13B2, subject to the following conditions. One, a draft fee with the following restrictions shall be submitted after approval of this subdivision for staff review and approval prior to recordation of the subdivision. The owner on behalf of themselves and their successors and/or assigns hereby covenant that until portions of the nonhistoric rear addition of the historic house on Lot 13-B1 currently existing on the property is completely removed or demolished, neither the owners nor any of their successors or assigns shall, one, construct any new structures on lots 13-B1 and 13-B2 created by this subdivision, or, two, convey lots 13-B1 and 13-B2 to other purchasers except when all of lots 13-B1 and 13-B2 are conveyed to a single purchaser. This covenant shall run with the land and be binding on all persons owning lots 13-B1 and 13-B2 and any of their successors or assigns until the existing identified nonhistoric addition to be structures on the property are removed or demolished.
Thank you.
Is anybody else having issues with the sound, or is that just on my end?
Mr. Puentes sounded a little quiet to me, but I was able to hear him.
Oh, I just have a, like, it's repeating everything about 10 seconds after it's being said, that's all.
I've got a little bit of echo going, too. Sir Wadyska?
All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave and come right back, because it's significant on my end.
All right. See you soon. While we wait for that, I will be looking for a second, but we won't. I could do a second while Russ is out, but if anyone has a second. Was that you, Mr. Stevens?
Uh, this is typical.
Well, we can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good, yeah. I wasn't offering a second, but.
That's fine, but you don't have to. All right, we have a motion from Mr. Puentes. We know that Mr. Wadyska is reconnecting. Waiting to see if we get a second for a minute. I'm willing to second the motion if I'm allowed to. I don't even know if I, is that permissible for the chair? I haven't seen Mr. Wadyska get connected back yet.
I'll be done shortly. Okay.
All right, I don't know how long we can wait for Russ. Is Russ our only hope of getting a second for this? I'm curious what the other commissioners are thinking. Personally, I'd love to get a second and vote on it, even if whichever way the vote goes.
Mr. Chair, this is Tim Stevens again. Reluctantly, I'll, I'll second it, because I did intend to vote for this, but not because it particularly represents good policy. There's a lot of difficulties with this, particularly the dog leg. Figure one of these days, the owner of B2 will figure out that they're gonna pay real estate tax on property that they really don't control. It's just one of many, many issues, but in the interest of moving this along, I will offer a second.
All right. All right, they have a motion and a second, and I assume Mr. Wadyska is still trying to get back in, but in the meantime, I think at least Ms. Teetz wanted to make a statement before we voted. Is that right, or do you want to make a statement after we voted?
Oh, no, I can talk now, because I, this is my reason for why I'm voting no, and I wanted to talk about that.
Okay, go ahead.
So basically, with the dog leg, it's kind of questionable, but it's true that the code doesn't explicitly say you can have the dog leg, but it doesn't explicitly say you could. And I would suggest that most of the regulatory language, the code language, the general regulations, the definitions, really don't allow the dog leg, but that's not really my biggest problem. My biggest problem is I don't think that 13B1 is conforming anymore. And basically, when you do a subdivision, both lots, both new lots, these are both new lots, are supposed to be conforming. I think the problem with the dog leg extension is that it's between the street and the building, which does not meet our code language that says a front yard is the area between the street or the lot line in the building. And so this configuration is causing a yard duplication, which is explicitly against code, and that is in our general regulations. So at the very beginning of our chapter on zoning, there is a section of general regulations that are the four things that have to be true no matter what. And one of those things is you can't duplicate a yard. So basically, the dog leg can't be part of the front yard technically of that side of the historic house, because it's, you know, to give it the minimum yard width it needs to have. And so we're basically kind of double dipping there. So we're using the dog leg to give one lot enough square footage, and we're kind of using it technically to be part of the front yard for the historic house, because historic house, ooh, that's a bad echo, historic house has to have at least 30 yard, you know, a 30-foot front yard. It actually needs more than that because of averaging. So I just feel like that as long as the layout is the way it is, that 13B1 is nonconforming, and therefore I can't vote for the subdivision, because it's a nonconforming lot. And there was a lot of back echo there, but I don't know, but that's the basic problem.
Yes, I heard the echo, but I was able to hear your comment. Hopefully everyone else was, but well. All right, it looks like Mr. Wadyska's back. Russ, we got a motion and we got a second, and now we're just talking a little bit about the motion before we vote on it. Does anyone else have any comments?
This is Rob Puentes. I actually like to hear either staff or the applicant respond to Ms. Teetz.
This is Dave Lasso. The lot, the new B1 is conforming. I think there's a confusion here. The front yard, or the yard, front yard only, you know, lot width needs to be 75 feet. It's more than, somewhere about 100 feet along Cherry Streets, about 130 feet along.
I was talking about the minimum depth of the, of the yard, the yard depth, not the, the length.
I'm talking about the width of the front yard. And so it is, throughout the city, there are particularly in pie-shaped lots on cul-de-sacs where the actual. And it belongs to the neighbor. But the width of the front yard at the house is where it's measured, has to be the correct width for the lot. So this is a conforming lot. It's not a non, we're not creating a nonconformity. And I think that Akita spoke with all of these issues with the city attorney. They're in agreement. It's a conform.
Yeah, so I can jump in. Thank you, Mr. Lasso. Yeah, we, I actually spoke with the city attorney this morning, and many email confirmation from her as well, that she agreed with the staff analysis and didn't see any issues that would prevent the subdivision from approval. I think, so Lot 13B1 is not nonconforming. In fact, it is, it does comply with the zoning setback regulations. If, Ms. Teetz, if I understand you correct, I think, I'm sorry, hello?
No, yeah, I just wanted to say that my issue is that if you have, if that dog leg is in front of the building, then you don't have the yard you're supposed to have between the building and the lot line that's supposed to be at the street. So if the dog leg didn't go past the building, I don't think it would be an issue, but it is in front of the building. So de facto, the building's placement then is in, if that, you know, if that, that creates kind of this weird side yard that you guys are calling it, but it's not really a side yard, because the definitions in the code say that between the building and the street is front yard.
Right, right.
And it doesn't have a full front yard. So I just, you know, it just, it doesn't make sense based on our code. It doesn't make sense when you talk about yard duplication. In fact, general regulations also has a section on what a yard can't be used in this manner either. So I, you know, that's, I can understand that you guys want to say it differently, and I know in November, when you tried, when the staff talked about why they thought this configuration was legal, you pointed to definitions, but we all know the definitions aren't regulatory. So the definitions don't, they're just there informationally. So, you know, my feeling is I don't see how this works unless you're using the definitions, and you can't use them that way.
Of course you can. The definitions are part of the code. We never said that the definitions don't help explain what the code means. I think you have a situation where one of the Planning Commission members has adopted a view of the code that is incorrect, is disagreed with by the city attorney and the staff, and it's inconsistent with situations across Falls Church and really other communities. It's not unusual where a neighbor, because of the odd configuration of a lot, a piece of the neighbor's property may actually be between a house and the street. But so long as the house that you're talking about has a proper front yard, and this does, it's over 100 feet wide, it's 45 feet deep, it meets the code.
I guess we're just not gonna agree here. The chapter 48 specifically says definition or not construed as regulatory. So to me, that means unless the context otherwise requires, it says, but, but it is not regulatory, and I think that a lot of this is being based on definitions. At least that was the staff report we were given in November, the original explanation of this. So, you know, and I will just say that in Ms. Gardner's letter, she said that she reviewed all the properties in the city, and she couldn't find any configuration that was similar to this at all. And I also looked, and I couldn't find one either. I will say, I myself am on a corner lot on a curve, so I have a pie-shaped lot. But my house is, is, is conforming in that I have two clear 30-feet front yards and two clear 15-feet backyards. So I do, you know, I just don't find any way for this lot to be conforming. But I, I don't want to go back and forth. This is what I understand to be true when I read the code and all the years that I've dealt with it. And, you know, if this is what the staff wants to do, that's fine, but I do feel like the staff is going out of its way to use definitions for loopholes, just like they did at Villa Ridge, and just like they did when they tried to deny averaging of yards. And I think this is a continuation of that, and it's very concerning to me. But, you know, we can go forward, and I don't want to argue about it, and we can go forward with the vote, because we have a lot of stuff to do today in our work session.
All right, thank you, Ms. Teetz. Does anyone else have any comments before we vote? All right, I, I share a lot of Ms. Teetz's concerns. I mean, I think my interpretation, and I think just the common person's assessment of it walking down the street, because it's not a cul-de-sac, it's just a straight street, is that it's a weird thing to permit, but, but I am willing to support the staff and the city attorney's interpretation, since they have more experience in these things than I do. But certainly from a layman's perspective, it seems like an odd thing that the code permits, and, you know, forever cleaning up zoning code, it'd be interesting to tackle these kinds of situations. Because I think, I think the end result is something that the code is trying to prevent, which is a density of housing that is not consistent with the code's trying to set up. But, but I have a lot of.
I have one question. Do we have an actual written opinion from the city attorney?
I don't, I don't have a written opinion. I do have an email from her saying she agreed with staff and didn't see any issues with the subdivision.
Can you send that to me? I'd just like to see what she had to say.
Sure, I can forward it to you.
Thank you.
All right, if we have no other questions or comments, I am ready for a roll call vote.
I have one question, actually, just maybe to feed into the city attorney's analysis. I would like to understand what would prevent side lots, side lots from being wrapped around on, I share Ms. Teetz's opinion, which we discussed at our last, at our May meeting. To me, this seems to be an arbitrary wrapping around of a side yard and an arbitrary ending of the front yard. In other words, it almost seems to say that as long as you exceed 75 feet on one of the front lots, you can stop the front yard wherever you want and just wrap the side yard around. So I'd like the city attorney's view on, on that matter.
All right, I think, I assume staff can request that for a future meeting to get the answer.
Will do. I will convey that to the city attorney. I think the Arlington, specifically, other jurisdictions have language in their code that prevents certain number of bends in their lot line. We don't, we don't have that type of specific language in our code, and that's, it's, that's part of the issue. And if we don't want to see, and staff is in agreement that this is an extremely awkward configuration. The first time I saw it, it didn't make any sense to me, and then we all started applying the definitions. It just couldn't find anything glaringly obvious that would prevent this from being approved, and that's, that's where we are. If we want to prevent stuff like this in the future, I think we need to have clear language like Arlington and other jurisdictions that would control the number of bends and angles a lot line can make. I think that's, that's, that's part of the issue.
Yeah, I agree with that. All right, Ms. Schaefer, you want to call a roll vote? Yes.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
If you said yes or no, Tim, you didn't unmute first.
Oh, sorry, yes.
Thank you. All right, I think that item is done.
Thank you very much.
Yes, you're welcome. All right, moving right along, we have the July 1 minutes that we need to review and approve or update. Does anyone have any comments about the July 1 minutes?
Mr. Chair, I do have a request on line 48. After the word requested, I'd like to add delete when it's the rest of the way. So it should read requested to delete language proposing to extend the two-step side plan approval process.
Yes, I think that is an appropriate update.
Yes, I think that is an appropriate update.
Definitely. We both, definitely it's a delete.
All right. Did you, okay, Ms. Shaver? You said it was line 48, right? 48? Any other adjustments to the minutes?
Mr. Chair, I move that we adopt the minutes.
As amended? And I'll second. Ms. Teetz is seconded.
All right. We have a motion by Mr. Stevens to adopt the amended minutes, seconded by Ms. Teetz. Ms. Shaver, could you do a quick roll call vote?
I saw you unmuted, but I don't hear you. Yes, yes.
Ms. Teetz?
Yes.
Abstain?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. We're on to item 7A, planning commissioner's reports. Do we have any reports from planning commissioners? I'm sure Mr. Stevens has something to report.
Actually, I do. I was, I'll keep this very short. I was on a webinar today that Paul Gilbert, who's the executive director of Nova Parkson, spoke for us on the dual path. He mentioned that overall use of the trail, WNRD, pandemic period is up 36% and over triple digits during peak times. And he did also mention that the dual trail construction will start next month and will take approximately a year to complete. Also, NVTA, who funded the two grant requests the city had proposed, has also funded the extension of the dual trails into Arlington for the next phase. So some interesting points for those of us interested in bicycling.
Great. It'll be a rough year of construction, but it'll be great when it's done. Anyone else have anything to report?
Hi, this is Ross. I attended the EDA meeting, the virtual EDA meeting, and there was lots of discussion. It was quite a long meeting, something approaching like two and a half plus hours. So they talked about a lot of different issues, one of which will be the item that's on tonight's agenda regarding the, the updated proposal for West Falls Church, but also their, in their grant program, some discussion about the murals, which is also somewhat what we're going to talk about later, and just so additional, you know, discussion on the wayfinding project and how that would go. Oh, and, and I'm sorry, there's also a discussion about the, Walker consultants gave a detailed parking study presentation. And we heard a little bit about this as the planning commissioner a couple of months ago, I think. But really, the outcome of it, it sounds like, you know, there are some peak times that we have some issues, but overall, there is, the data does not support that we have a major parking problem. So we're trying to come up with solutions that fit the problem, or the EDA is rather, but not really wholesale overhaul of how we do parking here.
Did, do you know if the study period was during the pandemic or prior?
It was prior.
Okay, good. Because otherwise-
Right.
That's faulty.
Yeah, I think it's actually, I can see if I can pull up the presentation, but I think it was, I remember this particular question. I want to say it was January, my recollection.
All right. Any other reports? All right.
Yes, I just confirmed. It was the January 30th is when it started, the count.
Okay. We had some correspondence, some late-breaking correspondence as well. Is there anything of note that we should discuss? There was some information about the transportation grant money we got and some other things, but I wasn't sure if we needed to discuss any of that here.
I was going to mention, this is Gary Fuller, acting director tonight. I was going to mention it on the director's report briefly, but, yeah.
Oh, yeah, I guess that did show up on the director's report. All right, well, then let's just move ahead. That's up next. Go for it.
All right. Yeah, I'll just start off with that. So as you know, two of the items in the director's report, one was the announcement by our communications office, and then there was a local newspaper that picked up on the information as well. But we did receive from NVTA two grants totaling 15.3 million, and one is for the West Falls Church access to transit and multimodal connectivity project, and that's to install 10 multi-use paths and six planting strips along Shreve Road between W O N D Trail and Route 7. And that would be street lights, crosswalks, and at the intersection of Shreve and Gordon, and also some benches near the entrance to W O N D Trail. The second project was the downtown Falls Church multimodal improvements, and that was 8.3 million. And that's to install two mid-block crossings, widen sidewalks, remove obstructions, including utility lines, install curb extensions, and adjust the intersection geometry, increase visibility of the crosswalks and intersections on park between North Washington and Virginia Avenue. So we're looking forward to working on those in the future. In looking at our schedule upcoming, at this point, we have, the next meeting is August 5th. We had two referrals from council on Monday night. One was the West Falls Church SE SP and the SE amendment. So those are coming to us for a recommendation quickly on August 5th. And then the second item referred was South Gate 2, which is rezoning, and that's for a public hearing as well, recommendation to council on the 5th. And then we also were bringing a discussion item on expanding community notice on development applications. The council next Monday will be having a briefing and discussion on the West Falls Church small area plan, and then they'll have a tentatively Broad in Washington would kick off in terms of a work session before that would go to any official formal referrals. That may or may not happen. We'll know in the next two days whether that's going to be scheduled. We've been prepping in case it is, but the, I think the mayor and the city manager will decide tomorrow whether that's going to be on that agenda, and that would ultimately affect our August 19th meeting. If that is not initiated, it would then happen in September instead. So anyway, looking at the August 19th meeting, like, like I just mentioned tentatively, we had Broad in Washington, which is a special exception. That would be a work session. And then also, the West End small area plan comes back to us on a work session that evening as well. Following that, on September 2nd, Broad in Washington could come back, as well as the West End area plan, both for public hearings. And then a comp plan utility, community facilities, conference plan update, work session is tentatively scheduled also for that. As I mentioned earlier, we're, we're starting to hear that we'll be in virtual meetings probably through September, then after that, we'll be looking at options that we may have available. So we'll, we'll inform you as, as we hear on those. In terms of director's report and those informational items, that's all I have for this evening. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to take them now as well, or any request.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Fuller. I did have one quick question. This new version of the Broad in Washington project, we, planning commission, have, have yet to see anything in any kind of a meeting on that, right?
That's correct.
Well, it'd be great to finally see something official, since I've heard a bunch of unofficial stuff.
Yeah, even the council has not seen it as an, as an entire group. It's been to some smaller, you know, the EDC and so forth, and that's been it. So, yeah. So, you know, there's a good chance that that'll get started in the next month or so. We'll see.
All right. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Fuller? This is usually where we log our personal gripes about city operations. Just kidding. City's been running great.
Thank you.
Nothing-
How do we know? We're all in our houses, right?
No, I've been biking around with my daughter. Actually, I saw in the, in the, what's the stream that goes past the fire station?
Four Mile.
Four Mile Run, I saw a beaver right next to the fire station. Very exciting. All right. Well, I guess that brings us to the conclusion of the public hearing part of this meeting, and we now enter into work session.
And so we have two work session items. We have the West Falls Church SE SP, the SE amendment with Carly as staff, and then we have the UVA public art policy report for discussion and informational item. Shane will be staffing that. Thank you.
All right. Our agenda has the public art first. Should we just stick with that?
Staff, what was the final decision on?
I was wondering, I was like, I don't see anyone else in this meeting. All right, but public art, we can tackle that now. All right. Is that the end of your presentation? Yeah, this looks like a lot of, a lot of hard work went into this. Let's go around, see who has comments, questions, suggestions. I will do the same thing I did before, go in the order of the Skype list. So Ms. Weiss, starting with you.
I don't have any specific questions. I'll just comment that there's a few areas that I liked, such as the recommendation to incorporate biophilic art. I think there's a great opportunity for us to do more combination stormwater and public art. So I love that that showed up there. And the four pillars make sense to me, especially the, I like the commitment to equity.
All right. Thanks for those comments. Ms. Teetz, what about you?
I think this is a really good draft, and I think it's a good start. I would say that in section 1.4, the definition of public art, I wonder, oh, and actually, I guess it's like, it's kind of like the definition of public art plus the public property, private property thing. Should, we don't really talk about here is that art that is on like a private building that is paid for through public funds. So I think that should be, that needs to be defined a little bit here, because I think Brown's Park's an example of that, that didn't really go through a big public process because it was on a private building, but it was paid for through public funds. And while I think the mural turned out very nice, and I understand that Mr. Brown loved hot air balloons, so this was kind of something, a tribute to him, but I still think like, since that was public money, it should have been part of the process. So I think that that needs to be cleared up in here, that, you know, some of the art that would have to go through the process could possibly be art that's just paid for by the city, even though the actual location is private. Also, I think, and I actually think Vipas put this in their letter, I did think there was a problem with some of the tenses in here, that some of it is like, like looking forward, but, and so I think, you know, I think part of it is that they're writing the policy before the policy is accepted. So we need to make sure that the language is all like in current terms. I think that the commitment to, you know, the four commitments, I think those are really great. I think they make a lot of sense. I love the commitment to storytelling. I think that that is something that's really key, that we want it to be story, we want it to be interesting stories. We want them to be about stories about the city where it can be, about unique culture. I think that that's, actually, of the four, that's the one I like the most. And that's pretty much it, because I mean, it's, it'd be great to have this policy going forward, and we really, really need it.
All right. Thanks, yeah, and I agree with you about the publicly funded art, regardless of where it ends up, probably needs to be incorporated in the policy. Mr. Poitess, do you have some comments?
No, I thought, I thought this was great. It's just not something I've really ever thought about before. I learned a lot from reading. I think it's a solid document, and I agree, I, I think the commitment to marginalized narratives is a, is a good one. I think it's a great thing. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Wadiska, thoughts? Comments?
Yeah, similar to what everybody else said, I, I think this is an excellent document. It's, you know, it's, it's more than a good start. It's a really good case for why we need policy in this area, and very inspiring. I mean, something that we can all try to live up to in terms of how we add art and its importance. So I really liked it, and again, what everybody else said, in terms of learning stuff about the process, and, and the four pillars are hard to argue with. So very supportive of this and looking forward to trying to assist in any way to draft that policy. That's all.
All right. Thanks. And Mr. Stevens- And Mr. Stevens, thoughts?
Yes, I would agree with Ms. Teetz's concern about the need to tighten up the definition of public art. And when public art exists or is placed on private property, either without an easement, but obviously if it's something you can see, even if there's no easement, it kind of does make it seem like public art. But there should be some kind of a process there that goes beyond just, let's say, the EDA, even though they did, I think, a good job on this overall. One issue I had, I think Ms. Shaver might have cleared this up. And that, it wasn't clear to me what the relationship of the student report was to the policy. And I think it would help to just clarify that it's providing context, background and so forth. But that it is, it is not tied in or referenced to the policy per se. So I think that's, if I, if I understood you correctly, I believe that's what you were saying in terms of this goes to. Good. Okay, that's helpful. What will the city council be asked to do on this? And that we might be asked to comment on? Will they, something like the street state policy, resolution? Or what's the formal vehicle that this will be adopted? So would it be a resolution or? Okay. In terms of the city art and cultural district designation, would that be the only places where public art could be placed? So it's, it's not intended that there would be no possibility for public art to be positioned outside of, of those. Okay, I think it'd be good to clarify that too, that it's not trying to restrict where public art could go. I thought I read at one point that the, said that the planning department would conduct a public engagement process. And I'm just wondering, would that be different from a public hearing that the planning commission might engage in? It might be helpful just to clarify.
Hey, you know, I just wanted to mention one thing I was, because I was looking at the map when it was brought up. I was, I was kind of curious, isn't, wouldn't the arch at Eden Center be considered public art? They have that very cool arch with kind of, you know, kind of an Asian style arch there. Anyway, just wondered if something like that's considered public art?
Good question.
There is a little bit of debate whether it's art that is simply visibly seen by the public or if it has to be art that is on public property.
Right. I guess, I mean, and like the Tender Hill Arch is kind of one of those things where it's like more of a historic marker than art, but some people might consider it art. I know, I was just, I was just curious because I was, I was just thinking, I was just at Eden Center yesterday and I was thinking that kind of is public art too in its own way. But anyway, just, just wondering, you know, about how broad the definition would be.
Yeah, I think that's an area to get in on a little bit more. Mr. Stevens, did you finish your comments?
I guess I got, I had one more. I'm just wondering if 6.2, section 6.2 of the policy, should that be the planning commission rather than the planning department? It almost makes it seem, and maybe I'm misinterpreting this. It almost makes it seem like public art approval is a governmental function and not a public function.
Yeah, that's a good. Which section was that?
6.2. On page 79.
A lot of scrolling.
The Art and Humanities Council will make a recommendation to the Falls Church Planning Department as to whether the proposed artwork should be approved. Could that be clarified there as well? I think that's all I got.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Stevens. I also, I thought this was a great effort. I will say, we haven't talked about this, but obviously, reading it and seeing Barb Cram's name at the top, it definitely made me appreciate all that she did for the city. And she'll be sorely missed for sure. But this, this public art policy will be one of her many legacies. I agree with the comments made about publicly funded art being considered as part of this process and just generally putting a little bit more thought into what is defined as public art. And like everyone else, I thought those pillars are great. It is interesting, I think, in these days with what's been going on and all the reckoning that we've been dealing with to see storytelling and equity next to each other since, you know, one of the things you realize is that storytelling, if it's not done appropriately, can be a big part of the problem. So certainly making sure our storytelling is telling the story appropriately with that commitment to equity is going to be important. But otherwise, I don't really, I don't have any comments. I thought the map, actually, the maps are really interesting and well done. I think it's a great way to kind of visualize what we're talking about in terms of scope and scale in terms of existing and planning. So that was great. But I, I don't know. It seems like we've given you a strong thumbs up on the four pillars. Was there anything else very specific that you guys were hoping to get from it? Okay.
Can I just make one small, small comment, just following off of Mr. Stevens' comment on the approval process? Just going back to roles and responsibilities. Just looking at the role of the planning commission, it says we're reviewing recommendations. It would be helpful when staff is clarifying the approval process. If you could connect that back and define specifically what planning commission is doing. Are we making recommendations? Are we approving? Are we deciding if it conforms with the policy? Just a little more clarity on the specific role of the planning commission and the approval process, I think, would be helpful.
Yeah, as long as people aren't relying on me to pick the art, because I'm bad at that. But I'm good at, good at applying policies to things, so sign me up for that. All right, I think we've got that one covered. Do we think we are ready for the West Falls Church stuff? I see a few people have joined the meeting, or at least one person.
This is Carly Aubrey. I'm here from staff. And it looks like we've got Robin Beterall from Hoffman. And I saw Evan on, but now he's gone. Oh, there he is.
I'm here. Yeah, we're ready.
Okay. So I'll just give a brief update on where we're at. And then I'll turn it over to them to really get into the presentation. As you'll recall, the city council approved the special exception entitlement for the site last year, last July. And that kind of laid out the conceptual site plan for the project. We are now at the site, special exception site plan phase. And in addition, they are requesting some amendments to the SCE, which you'll see when they get into their presentation. But there's been some shifts in building locations and street layout. And then there's a request for a shift in the parcel boundary and the phase one boundary. And some additional considerations of some additional uses. So that's the main amendment items. And then the special exception site plan has all the details that you are familiar with seeing in a site plan. And so this process would be looking at not just those requirements, but also the primary and secondary criteria that are evaluated during a special exception. That Mondays, this past Monday's council meeting, they officially referred it out to the boards and commissions. So we'll have a work session with planning commission this evening and a public hearing on August 5th to provide a recommendation to council. The other board and commission meetings are happening this month as well, with the exception of Parks and Rec, since they have recess July and August. So they'll see it, their first meeting in September. And then the ideal is to have a council work session August 10th. And that would, purpose of that would be to consider all the staff comments, all the board and commission comments received to date. And then the development team can work on a second submission over the month of August and September. And the counts or the staff report that's provided tonight, that's being shown, provides a comprehensive plan analysis, special exception analysis, and some key technical comments that have been raised by staff at this point. We have most comments in, still waiting on a couple. So with that, I will take any questions for staff at this point, or we can turn it over to the development team to walk through the presentation.
All right. I am looking forward to the presentation before throwing out questions. But if anyone, does anyone have any questions for staff quickly that we can make sense before the presentation? I don't, I'm not seeing anyone unmute. So I'm going to say, let's go forward to the presentation and then we'll go with questions.
One, sorry. Sorry, in earlier documents, there was a reference to the, to a traffic study being done by this time. I didn't see it in the materials. I don't know if I missed it or is that forthcoming? What's the status of the traffic study?
They are, so, yeah, this will be talked about in the presentation. But we're having coordination, ongoing coordination with VDOT and Fairfax County DOT, primarily on the intersection of Seven, Chestnut and Commons. So once that gets resolved, or we pretty, we think pretty close to being resolved, then we'll be able to, they will be able to update the TIA, the signal justification reports, that kind of stuff. So it should be hopefully upcoming in the next submission.
All right. Sounds good. Let's go ahead with the presentation.
Great. Thank you. I'm going to share my screen. Is that okay?
Works for me, but I'm not technically involved with this, so.
Perfect. Okay, so just let me know once you can see it.
Not yet. At least for me. Ooh, something's happening. Now I can see it.
Okay. Great. Okay, perfect. So two things, we just go to full screen mode. It'll take a second. So I can't see anybody's faces, so I'm just going to say that off the bat. I can only see the presentation as I walk through this. And then can you see my cursor, the little hand?
For me, since you took a second, yes, I can see the hand.
Okay, perfect. So what I'll probably do, we've had a little bit of an issue with some delay in going from slide to slide. So if that happens, we may have somebody else present, or I'll speak to the slides, but have somebody else pull it up on their computer. But let's try to go through it. So first of all, my name is Evan Goldman. I'm Executive Vice President of Development and Acquisitions for EYA. We have a whole host of team members on the call tonight, including Robin Beterall from Hoffman Associates and Laura Schonfeld from Hoffman Associates, Amy Friedlander from EYA. And then we also have our civil engineering firm, Walter Phillips. We have our planning firm, Tordi Gallus. I believe we have our landscape firm, Land Design, on the phone. So if there are questions along the way, the different professionals, we have to answer those questions too. The presentation I gave the other night was quite long. So I'm trying, going to try to give a brief, a little bit less detailed presentation tonight and then leave, you know, as much time as possible for Q and A. But I'm very excited to present the project today. And so with that, we're going to move forward. So I just moved to the next slide. Oh, shoot, I screwed that up. It helps when I start on the first slide, not the last slide. Give me one second.
Yeah, I will say, when you first started, it seemed like it's taking a little bit of time to draw the screens, but I'll let you know if it's super slow.
Okay, perfect. So I'm on the agenda slide right now. Is that where you are?
Yeah, we see it.
Okay, perfect. So tonight, we'll talk a little bit about the current economic crisis. We'll talk about the SESP changes or improvements from the SCE to the SESP, some of which you all saw in some of the work sessions last year or in December. Placemaking, site design, architecture and public benefits. I'm going to touch on each of these topics. And I'll go into some depth in the areas where I think you might have interest, especially on planning and design. And then, of course, we can get into as much detail as you want during the Q and A session. So that, did the slide flip for all of you?
Yeah, that's good.
Okay, great. This is awesome. Okay, still.
I can actually see a thing. Am I the only one?
Uh-oh.
I can't, I can't see it either.
Oh, I can see it.
I can. I was speaking for everyone, which I shouldn't have been doing.
I can see it fine.
Yeah, I can see it fine as well.
For me, it says that it says there's nothing to see now. The presenter's windows are minimized.
That's what I see. That's what I see as well.
Okay, I'm going to try again. Hold on, I'm going to stop presenting.
Do we have a, this presentation is one of the attachments? I feel like we do, and then I can just follow along as you switch slides.
Well, I'm going to try one more thing first. Hopefully this will work.
It is not an attachment.
Okay, thank you.
So let me know if you can see this in a second. I did something slightly different.
Quick shout out to Skype for Business.
I can see that.
Yeah, now I can see it as well.
Me too.
Okay, so the folks who couldn't see it before, you can now see it?
Yes.
Hey, okay. I'm not usually good at technology. I'm very proud of myself right now.
Don't, don't count your chickens before they hatch.
Exactly, as the whole thing crashes down. Okay, so, so the first slide, I just, I feel like I need to address this upfront. Obviously, we all know we're living through unbelievable crisis, a health crisis and certainly an economic crisis. So we don't really know what the fallout is going to be yet. So we just wanted you all to know, we are, we're meeting with Wyatt and Carly regularly. We're talking through what that could mean for the project. I don't think we know yet, you know, could there be impacts to schedule potentially? Could there be impacts to the project potentially? And so we will continue to communicate and work with staff. And then, of course, work with you and you all in the council. Our goal is to build the project that we're presenting to all of you tonight because we think it's the right project for the city. And we know that it meets the goals of the city. So we're going to present the project in that vein. But obviously, there are just so many unknowns right now out there that it's, it's just, you know, I just felt like, we feel like that just needs to be stated. So with that, this slide, I'm actually going to go to full view now so you can see a bigger. this slide, I'm actually gonna go to full view now, so you can see a bigger version of it, full screen. Okay, so on the left is our proposed SESP in context with existing conditions. And on the right is a context plan that shows how our proposed plan can knit within the fabric of the surrounding neighborhood. And so it shows the proposed Virginia Tech block diagram. For some of you on the phone, this may be new, but they have agreed to continue our Central Park space all the way through the Virginia Tech site. So that would increase the feeling of that open space by another 350 linear feet, which is really fantastic. And then we are working, meaning Hoffman and EYA, are working in partnership with Rushmark to redevelop the Womata site, which would have townhomes, apartments with a little bit of retail, some townhomes, a little bit of office. So collectively, this 40 acre vision that we started talking about two years ago is starting to come true. The Virginia Tech and Womata sites are going through a comprehensive plan amendment process in the county. And, you know, will likely be two years behind the high school site. But that connection really will happen one day, which is great. On the other side, towards the city side, which is obviously even more important for this group, we've started thinking about, you know, how could our project line up with future development that might happen on those parcels? How could you create a great grid of streets? And I think what we, what we at least feel pretty comfortable about is that it works quite well, and that hopefully this project will spark the type of economic revitalization that you're all seeking in this area. Is there, can I already see the new slides called SCE modifications?
I see, oh yeah, it just took a second for me to read you all for me.
There we go.
I can see it as well.
Okay, so when I, when I change a slide, I'm gonna pause a few seconds. It'll give me a chance to breathe. So this is probably the meat of the presentation, and then the rest of the presentation is more, you know, fun, pretty images and architecture. But the main idea on the bottom right is the SCE approval. On the upper left, the bigger plan is what we submitted for our SESP. In general, the diagram is the same. It's the same concept of this great park and Main Street coming off of Leesburg Pike going towards route, towards the metro. It still has the grocery store and the apartment building at the corner of Leesburg and Haycock. It still has the same uses, still has the same square footages, so generally the same project. The big planning changes, most of which we previewed with this group last year in that, in the work session. The changes are as follows, and this came out of when we got our construction pricing back on the initial SCE from our contractors late last fall, early winter. It was clear that there were some design decisions we had made in phase one that were impacting the cost of the project dramatically. There were two, actually. One was below grade parking. And the site just, you know, for some reason, and we haven't, we, well, we do know why now, but the project is about 40% more expensive for below grade parking than we had ever estimated. And so we tried to come up with solutions for how we could reduce the cost of the parking. And then secondly, by separating the two apartment buildings, the apartment building into two separate buildings, the smaller building was extremely inefficient, sorry, if I can turn that off, extremely inefficient and much more expensive. And so the solutions we presented last fall was the idea of combining the apartments into one building, but keeping the micro units, or still marketing both types of units. So the product, the mix has largely stayed the same. And then moving the condo building into a taller concrete structure near the high school, but then setting it back from the high school more than we were set back before. And so if you look at Block C, we've introduced Lane Four, which is a 40-foot setback of that building from the high school plaza, gives a little bit of breathing room to the plaza. And it also allows for a sidewalk that will allow, that will create the entry to the music school along that facade. In the old version, we were right up against the Community Grove, which we later learned was all stormwater management and planting in that area, and so there would have been no place for the entry to the actual music center. By pulling it back, we're able to create that pedestrian experience and the entry space, as well as a layby for parents to pick up and drop off. This also creates additional ways for cars to get in and out of the site, and then for cars to get to the high school drop off. And this is something we've shared with the school board, and they, they like this concept. We've also stepped the condo building back in architectural design. It's in accordance with the SCE approval, and you'll see that in a moment. And it's quite frankly, one of the more modern, attractive buildings that you'll see. And they're all attractive, but that one in particular is very modern. So that was a change. The other change from the SCE is we used to have a Street A, which connected from Haycock all the way to the Commons. And you might recall, because of the slopes and the grade on the site, that was getting to be to a place, because of the 23 feet of grade, where we were having slopes that were not handicap accessible. So we would have been building a street and then had a 10 to 12% grade slope in certain locations, which wouldn't work for wheelchairs or those who need, who are handicapped and so are disabled. So instead of pursuing that further, we made the decision about almost 12 months ago, or nine months ago, to divorce the street grade and use the garage to pick up that grade. So you come in at the lower level at Haycock on Street C into the garage, and you come in at a higher level off Street B. And we created a pedestrian connection space that connects from Haycock all the way up through to the high school, that allows kids as well as shoppers from the Federal Realty Shopping Center to go back and forth safely between the two projects. We think it'll end up being one of the more exciting and interesting spaces in the project. We'll show you some perspective images of that later on in the presentation. The other change is, we used to have one larger above-grade parking garage on the northeastern side of the plan. You can see where my cursor is. We've now split that into two smaller decks, one on the east side, one on the west side of the plan. Number one, this is helpful for retail, because we now have retail parking split in both sides of the plan versus everybody going to the one place and walking further. And then secondly, this solved for that budgetary issue I mentioned by allowing us to bring the parking from below the office and hotel to an above-grade structured parking deck, which is less expensive, and brought our budget back in line with where we needed to be per our agreement with the city and what our return requirements were to try to finance the project. That also, that caused us to rotate the hotel and the office building. You can see that here. And so the, all of these changes, in addition to the Lane Four introduction, resulted in us needing a little bit more land for the Phase Two office building. As you may recall, we were well under the 30% allowable square footage for the site plan or land area for the site plan. And so we've asked the school, the city, we're asking now, we had talked to the school board and the schools about extending the Phase Two building 60 feet or so, I think it's 68 feet, more into the school parking lot and replacing their parking when that Phase Two building gets built. And that is something that so far, the schools have generally been supportive of, and something we're asking the city to consider as well. The, the last piece, I would say, is the entry into the project has been about a six-month odyssey. What you're seeing is what we thought was gonna get approval from VDOT and FCDOT. We presented this to them last March, or came up with this idea in March. That has now been rejected by both agencies, and so you'll see in a moment, a revised plan that we didn't come up with till after we submitted our plan. It's an improvement for us in that it increases open space, which is nice, because we didn't really love this intersection. But it also has some challenges as well on the south side of Route Seven, which I'll share. And that is something we're working through with VDOT and the city and the county. So those are the big changes on the plan, and we can come back and revisit these when you have questions, which I'm sure you will. The retail plan, concept here is not changed, although there is one or two improvements. All of the red is retail, so the ground floor areas, the buildings have retained the retail feeling that we always promised. The Aqua spaces are our civic spaces, so the one in the sea building is the music school we've been talking about. And the one on Leesburg Pike is the kind of conference center event space that used to be on the second floor. It's now on the ground floor. But what's nice is by turning the office building and creating that space, we're now able to activate all of this Route Seven frontage with retail, which was something that we had heard loudly and clearly when we presented our SCE was, was something the city wanted to see. We've also created a lobby for the grocery right at the corner of Haycock and Seven, with a secondary entrance up the street closer to the Commons. And you'll see in a moment, we've added oh, my slide didn't flip. We've added retail down on Haycock Road, which was a request from the city last year when we got our SCE approved. We originally didn't think we could make something work there. We've now created a 10,000 square foot space along Haycock that we would like to lease as a daycare center with an outdoor play space, which you can see where my cursor is. And that could long-term be daycare, retail, you know, whatever it may be over the 99-year project, but what it does is allow for the long-term connectivity to the Federal Realty Shopping Center. If they were to redevelop, it would allow that Haycock frontage to be even more active than a daycare, because it could obviously become retail at some point in the future. So that is the plan. I'm now on a, on a slide called intersection design. Are you all with me?
Still waiting for it to load for me.
Okay.
There, I see it now.
I see it.
Okay, perfect. Okay, so as I just mentioned, the intersection of Route Seven and Commons has been something that's been difficult to corral all the different parties into one solution. The issues at hand, just so everyone is fully aware, is to the south of us, obviously Route Seven is largely in the county. So the county has a hand in the design of this and in the approval process. It is owned by VDOT, so there you go. VDOT certainly will have a say. And to the south of us, there is a mix of feelings within that neighborhood about what they want. There are commercial property owners who clearly are, want a traffic light, and to some extent are begging for a traffic light. It's their lifeblood. Many of their customers and their deliveries come from the city. And so they don't want to lose the left end to the shopping center. And they've been collaborating with us on this plan. The townhome property residents are largely supportive. There are some who are concerned about cut-through traffic, but for the most part, their goal is to have access out to Route Seven, and they definitely want a safe pedestrian crossing of Route Seven, which of course a traffic light would require. The residents of the Falls Hills neighborhood that we've met with, some are supportive and want a traffic light. Some certainly want a traffic light for pedestrian crossing safety. There are some who especially live on Chestnut and are worried about cut-through traffic more than others. And so we came up with a design after playing around with this for months. It's a little unique, and the concept is to close Chestnut Street, since the median was gonna be closed anyway. And the county supervisors had already voted to turn this into a right-in, right-out intersection at Chestnut, and it has never carried a lot of traffic anyway. The concept is to close it with a hammerhead turn at the end, and then to create the traffic light intersection in a safe pedestrian crossings and a perfect rectilinear intersection from the Commons into the shopping center to the south. And what that allows long-term, if that ever redevelops, this creates a nice diagram for that redevelopment to happen directly across the street. And in the short term, or, or medium term, there would be easements granted that would allow the public to drive through the shopping center and out on Route Seven. So what this does is, number one, for those who want that access and want to be able to get out through Route Seven, they will have that ability at a traffic light safely. But Waze and Google Maps and other computer maps wouldn't view a public street to a public street, because there would be that break, or it's a private easement, and wouldn't take cars in this direction. So it should, in a traffic calming manner, reduce the amount of cut-through traffic through the Falls Hill neighborhood, which was one of the key goals. This concept, up until today, has largely been supported in the meetings we've had with VDOT and FCDOT, so I think we're headed in the right direction. We did have a meeting today with FCDOT and VDOT where one of the VDOT members brought up some concerns. So we have work to do from a design perspective, but we are hopeful that this will get approved. And it's certainly something, you know, we need the city and the schools and the planning commission and anybody you know and everyone you know to do whatever you can to try to support this concept. Our fear is if we do lose this battle, VDOT has made comments, you know, going all the way to just closing the median fully and having no left in or left out of the economic development project, which would be a, a big problem for both the project and traffic in the area. So, so we are really trying to figure out what's the right solution. Okay, I'm on the next slide. It's a 3D axon of the project in all white. Just let me know when you're there.
Not yet.
Okay.
Now I see it.
Great.
Looks fancy.
Thank you. So this is a sugar cube model, you know, it's an all-white model of the project. You're starting to see different heights. The condo building on the far left has this terrace element going down towards the school. And you can see that it's, it's a taller building than it had been before. It's now a 12 to 13-story building. You're seeing the Commons and the orange, orange dash line going out towards the metro and starting to set up this diagram of buildings that get taller as you get towards the metro. And with the shortest building, the apartment building over the grocer at Haycock and Route Seven. You can also see in this image the grade change along Leesburg Pike, which is fairly extreme. The next image is, the first time many of you are probably seeing this, once it comes up on your screen, is a rendering of the site and the architecture. So we, we presented architecture in very conceptual stages to all of you back in December. We got a lot of feedback from many people, and one of the common themes that kept coming up was, while a lot of projects in the city are more traditional, this seems to be a neighborhood where modern architecture really could be appropriate. And so we took that to heart, and the buildings you're seeing now are, of course, more modern than what you had seen in December. The buildings along Route Seven and Haycock still have a more historic flavor to them, and you'll see those in a moment. But you're seeing the condo, which would be probably one of the most modern buildings in the city, if this is approved, which has a similar white brick framed facade to what you see at the high school, where they have that beige facade that, you know, wraps around multiple windows overlooking the field, the football field. And then has these really cool inset balconies with a darker color metal panel material. And what it does, it creates these great views, it creates privacy, and it's one of the buildings we're really excited about. The next building is our hotel building. And so that building, you'll see in a moment, in a little bit more detail, and then the furthest building is the office. On the left, you're seeing the apartment building. I'll show you an image of that in a moment. The Commons now really starts to come alive. We've, we cut the street that used to cut through the Commons, so we now have more open space in that zone for both the green space below the trees and the hardscape zone. You're seeing ping pong tables, there's a fire pit. There's all this great outdoor seating, and we're starting to create what will hopefully be the living room for the West Falls Church neighborhood. You're also seeing the retail at the bottom level with all different levels, all different storefronts, which is extremely important to make the project come alive. And then, of course, the bike lanes going up and down either side of the Commons space in bright green. This next image, are you on, are you all with me on the next perspective?
Not quite, but I'm sure we'll get it. There it is.
Okay, okay. So this perspective image is looking at the apartment building. We're now in the Commons itself, looking south towards Route Seven. You can see the open space in the center with the swings on the right overlooking the park. Generally, the open space would have movable furniture, and we're trying to keep it as flexible as possible, so that there can be all different types of events, but we did create this kind of grouping of swings on the one side, so you can overlook the park space. The architecture of the, of the apartment building, this has a white brick facade that'll mirror each other with a, with a metal panel behind it. We'll show you some images of that in a moment. And then, just like the other buildings, has a really cool pop of color. There's these red balconies and red mullions. There's a wood panel going on the side, which is shown here in orange, and we'll show you that in a moment. That it just, it has a nice richness to it. The next slide, once you catch up, is the hotel building. And so this is a prominent building on the front of the park. And you're seeing here this kind of rich wood material on the front facade of the building. There's the, the main entrance tower in the center over where the lobby is. The idea is to have two different restaurants, one on either side of the lobby, so that it is active and exciting on the ground floor. And then on the left, you see these little twinkle lights between the hotel and the office building. We've created a shared space where the cars and the pedestrians going back to the parking garage share that space, very similar to some of the streets of the Wharf. And by creating the lower hanging lights, it becomes a more romantic, exciting, interesting space. The office lobby, as you'll see later in the presentation, is actually off of that street. So with that, I'm gonna move on to placemaking for a few moments, and then we'll get into architecture. So the project's guiding principles, we took a step back in late fall and early winter and started thinking through the place, studying Falls Church and making sure we were coming up with something that was appropriate here. And the four pillars that we are thinking through from a placemaking perspective are historic and spirited, celebrating the history of Falls Church, eclectic and refined, which we think really does define the diversity of this community, social and interactive, trying to create, as I said before, the living room for West Falls Church, and then sustainability. And so those four pillars weave their way into the mural choices, the art choices, the design choices of the project in general. And you'll start seeing that as our placemaking and amenity plan gets developed further over the next few years. There'll be a companion document to this SESP, which we submitted to the city. It's about an eight-page placemaking and amenity plan diagram that starts talking about how the placemaking elements get infused into the project, because many of those decisions will happen after SESP approval, as we start selecting artwork and design and murals and sculptural pieces. And we will obviously keep staff engaged in that process. The name we have come up with for the project is West Falls. And we, while it seems somewhat obvious now that we selected it, we went through a whole host of different ideas, including historic ideas, and we ultimately went with something that was more of an umbrella name for the project, so that the buildings can have historic references, the park can have a name, the streets can have names, there can be a lot of the history of the city within the project, but the umbrella name cannot just represent the project, but is, the Virginia Tech site is gonna be called West Falls. The Womata site can have that name. As you build out the rest of the West End, As you build out the rest of the west end, West Falls can start becoming a neighborhood within the city. And so that was the name we came up with and we're quite excited about it. This is a placemaking diagram I'd shared with all of you in the past. It's how we started coming up with the breakout of the Commons into these different zones. And that has really held to this day as we've started to design the Commons itself. So ignore the portion of the Commons as we come in off Route 7, because obviously that's going to change given the intersection, hopefully will get better. But the park itself still has the retail kiosks anchoring out on either end, has a splash park on the left side in blue. This kind of meandering pathway, the big open green in the center. The hardscape zone, which will have fire pits and ping pong tables and movable furniture and amenity spaces, sculptural elements. And then on the north side, these great bleacher stairs going up to the top of the kiosk. And the images on the bottom give you a sense of what that might look like. I'm on a, I'm on a plan now called placemaking, are you all with me?
Yes, I think we are.
Okay, great. So this would be the type of item you would see within the placemaking amenity plan or type of plan, I'm sorry. Where you would see the landscape plan with all of these callouts for different zones and what those zones would look like from a material perspective, from a rendering perspective, from an art perspective. There'll be examples and then within the placemaking package, each of these categories, whether it's hardscape, streetscape, lighting, retail storefronts, canopies in shade, art and sculpture, water features. They'll each have a section in the placemaking document that gives you a sense for the types of items we're hoping to select. And then that will give us the ability over the next three to four years as the project builds out and quite frankly, over the next 99 years as the project lives, to curate that mix over time. And the next slide is showing some of the images directly from our storefront guidelines that our tenants themselves will be required to build to. And this, what this does is essentially show you the type of unique mix of both signage, lighting, materiality, colors, the operable storefronts, the ability to really make the retail sing. So what we know we're getting approved at our SESP is a very simple storefront for all the projects. But the ultimate goal is for each of these retailers to have a unique presence on the Commons. Okay, so we're now at architecture. I'm on a slide that says building A1 multifamily, just let me know when you get there.
We got it.
Awesome. Okay, so some of the feedback we had heard in the fall was this concern that the corner apartment building was too big en masse, that there was too much of the kind of historic facade looming on Route 7. And so what we did is we started breaking down the scale of that building. All of these colored facades are different and unique facades within the building to try to give it a sense of scale and have it feel more like a typical urban street in any city where you'd have multiple buildings lined up next to each other. So that's what you're seeing here. The first facade we're going to look at is the Commons facade for the apartment building. And so this facade is the rendering you just saw. It has the white brick on the east and, sorry, the south and the north side that mirror each other. They're slightly different, but they're generally a similar pattern. You can see the red mullions, you can see the red balconies. And then in the center is a tower element. The name Falls is a placeholder, whatever the name of that building would be, or it could be a mural. There'll be something interesting there that shows you where the entrance to that building is. And then we have these really cool hung metal balconies hanging off of the building itself. The next facade is looking on Route 7, all the way from the Commons down to the corner where the grocery entrance is. And so this was the facade where we broke it up into five different pallets essentially. On the left side, you have the metal panel building, followed by the wood material building, followed by the white brick building. There's then a little bit of an inset and a break. Then you have a gray, the gray panel building, followed by the red brick, more historic building. And the idea is to go from the most historically correct building closest to the city of Falls Church to a more modern approach as you get to the Commons and around the corner. You can also see, of course, the slope of the street, which is extreme, it's 23 feet. And so we are handling that through green walls, through placemaking elements, and of course, through retail along those facades. The grocery itself will sit in this zone where the dark gray panel is. And that is, this is a facade that comes from the grocer itself. So the white you're seeing, the green and the gray are part of that architecture of the grocer itself. The entrance will be down at a lower level, you'll come in and go up to the second floor, which is the grocer. And then they'll have an entrance out here as well on grade that gets you closer to the Commons. That's interesting. Okay, I think I'm, oh, this doesn't have the details. Now I understand what you were saying. Okay, I got it. Okay, I'm gonna, I'll come back to some stuff in a second. This is the pedestrian passageway from routes, from Haycock, sorry, going up through the project that we talked about before. So the intersection here where the traffic light is, pedestrians will be able to cross. There'll be open space at the bottom and then traverse up this kind of interesting and unique stair that'll have a draw to it. And then pull people into the space, the pedestrian space, which will have murals and artwork and low hanging lights and quite a bit of placemaking. And what that would look like in three dimensions, on the, on the right here, you're seeing that stair pulling you up and in. It's very open and proud of the garage itself, so it feels nice and safe and comfortable. And then you're seeing what we've done and also in response to comments from folks in the fall. We've now covered the majority of the garage facade, anything that's really visible with a brick, a beautiful brick, red brick. And then the placemaking element would actually cover the, most of the rest of the precast of that garage in the center. And that would be some sort of mural element. I'm going to hand it over to the Hoffman team to talk about the next three buildings. And then I do apologize, we have actual materials associated with these buildings as callouts that are on other slides. And we will pull those up in a moment after this part of the presentation. And that's my fault, I pulled up the wrong presentation apparently. So with that, Robin or Lord, you guys want to talk about the office building?
Yeah, can everybody hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
My name is Robin Betterell, I'm with Hoffman and Associates. And this is the office building. So the elevation in front of you is actually the, sort of the front door of the office, although you'll never actually really experience that elevation exactly as it's shown. Because we have made a somewhat progressive decision, I would say, to put the office lobby down this lane two that's kind of shown where Evan's mouse is right now. The idea for that space is a sort of one earth like space, so a shared use path, vehicular, pedestrian and otherwise. The image that Evan's highlighting right now is actually down at the wharf. For those who have been to that project that we did down there, that is one of those spaces. And that's very much the image of what we're hoping to create here, between the office building and the hotel building. In the lower left image is the view down the one earth from the Commons. You can kind of see that overhang in the distance, that is the marker for the lobby. We'll be figuring out some kind of signage and lighting to really have that stand out. We also made a decision to sort of create this almost arcade space along there so that whoever takes tenancy in that retail bay can have an opportunity for some outdoor seating or some other in live and use so that that whole experience feels lively and welcoming. So here are some images of what we are looking to achieve in terms of the facade. I think the renders that you're seeing right now don't really highlight the materiality as well. It is precast facade, but so is that image in the sort of center of the slide. That's an existing building and that's very similar to the idea that we're trying to achieve there, where there's some interest in depth of the materials that I think kind of elevates them and creates a really textured and interesting dynamic facade, much more so than the renderings do justice to. We're also using two different colors, very similar to that image. And then we've created this sort of extruding volume out on the Commons, which is a glassier and also has a bit of a frame to it. The hotel building is the next building on the Commons. Again, similar to the apartments, there's a lot of frontage along the Commons. So we sort of tried to break it down into two different sections. That main section with the highlighted yellow highlight is actually where the lobby sits. So in between the two retail spaces to either side of it is the entry lobby to the hotel. And it has that sort of color highlight that is part of the brand, which we're hoping to announce soon. But also sort of highlights the entrance. And then you've got kind of two different themes going off on either side. To the left side, you are seeing kind of a wooded cementitious panel material. And then on the right side is some brick and more cementitious panel with a slightly different colorway that speaks a little bit more to the condo building up to the north there. Next slide.
Sorry.
Got the delay.
It should, I did it, so it should go soon. Sorry about that.
There you go. So there, you're just seeing a little bit more of the detail of what the different materials are intended to look like. Again, the renderings can only do so much. It's always good to see a precedent image of the real thing. Another feature that I really like about the hotel is this canopy piece that's going along the entire retail. I think it kind of brings that level of the building down to a really nice human scale and gives a good visual interest and kind of separates that plane of the building from what's going on on top. Next slide.
Sorry, I'll catch up, sorry.
So this is
Wow, it's really slow, sorry about that.
No problem. This is the B garage, so this garage sits behind and adjacent to the hotel. You really won't see it at all from the Commons, but you will see it prominently from the school. And one idea that we thought could be very fun, since you sort of have this big canvas, if you will, was to set up a system where you could attach these placemaking or art panels on the side. Rather than, you know, just decorate the building, we thought it could be a really fun opportunity for the schools and their art program there to get involved in the decor. And one thing in particular that we've been talking about a little bit with the schools that we thought would be fun was slowly over time for each graduating class to kind of create a panel that they would put up on this facade. And over time, you'd get this great tile that was sort of like a timeline of all the different graduating classes. And people could come back and look at it, it could become a really kind of cool moment with the schools, especially given the visibility from both Mary Ellen Henderson and George Mason. Next slide. And then you can also, while we're still waiting for the slide to change, you can start to see the condo building in that upper left image and the terracing back from the school plaza and from the schools that's going on there, which I think is really nice.
Wow, has it still not flipped?
Yeah, it hasn't flipped yet. And you can also see
Oh, really?
Yeah, it's very slow, that's okay. You can also see how lane four has really created a really nice separation from that school plaza and the condo building.
Still no dice?
No.
We're just gonna talk
I don't know if That could just be my computer, I don't know if other people
It hasn't advanced for me either. We, there we go.
There we go. This was just an idea of, you know, break.
Oh no, we lost her.
I think we lost you, Robin. I'll talk for you though. So this is the shared parking structure, the idea of the artwork being kind of pulled like a skin over that garage. But we can do that in smaller panels as well, working with the schools. We've been talking with Dr. Noonan about it already. The idea would be to engage his art department and start thinking through what's the right material, what's the right fastener system? What would it look like in the interim and while the panels are being created? And so we're excited to work on that. And then part of placemaking would be to come up with murals that tell the story of something. In this case, we thought about the story of sustainability, the story of storm management. And so that might be something you'd see on the bottom of the garage as well, almost like this educational walk as you're going towards the school. Okay, Robin, are you back on? I'm gonna keep going on the condo building, so let me know when you can see the facade of the condo.
We see it, it's quick this time.
Okay. And then Robin, you're, you're not there or?
I haven't seen her pop up on the list yet.
Okay. I'll keep talking and then she can pop back on. But this is the, one of the facades of the condominium building. And you can see the idea of this, you know, kind of beautiful white frame with the inset panels within. And we purposely, or Hoffman team purposely contrasted the colors, this kind of high white with the darker color charcoal on the inside to really give it great depth. The, sorry. And the next image, once it flips again, you'll see the stepping down of that condo building as it goes towards the high school, which creates beautiful outdoor terraces looking out over the Tyson skyline and the western sunset. And then also allows the building to break down into smaller modules and pieces. The next image, if you guys are looking, hopefully at the same image as me. We're looking now at the retail base. This retail, of course, would have differentiation in storefronts. It's just shown all its glass right now. But you're seeing, this would be the music school on the left side facing towards the school. And then of course, along the rest of that frontage would be retail. Above that would be the outdoor amenity space for the condominium building. And you're seeing now the terracing up at almost a 45 degree angle of the condominium building from alley, from lane four all the way up towards the main tower. So with that, I'm going to talk through public benefits for a moment. And then we do have a few slides of the details of the apartment building, which had gotten cut out of the presentation. We'll share those in a moment. So public benefits wise, obviously land value payment, ground rent, increased tax revenue and affordable housing. But more importantly, or most importantly on top of the fiscal side, is the open space we're trying to create, the level of retail, quality of retail, the idea of this outdoor living room for the city. The fact that this is not just this open space, but continues onto the Virginia Tech properties. So it's a much bigger space than you're even seeing here. The music school and educational spaces, the pedestrian friendly street grid and multimodal street grid, transportation improvements, public art, and of course, environmental sustainability, to name a few. And with that, I'm going to change presenters for a moment, if you don't mind, so that someone else can pull up. And let Brian pull up his screen, if that's okay. And that will have the other architectural details and then we'll be done. So that. Brian, take it away, why don't you present?
Or Brian, do you want me to present?
I got it.
Okay. Either one of you.
Do you see it now? Does everyone see some drawings?
It is loading, it's loading, it's loading, it's loading. I do apologize to everyone on the committee. We've had, I don't know, eight presentations in the last week to all different committees. So we have a series of different presentations and I apologize, I pulled up the wrong one from another one of our presentations. That cares a little bit less than all of you do about architecture. And so that was completely my fault, so I'm sorry about that. So, okay, so continuing to where we were on the apartment building, what you'll see next is a blow up of this portion of the building along Route 7, if you go to the next slide. So obviously in the rendering, it was fairly 2D, but this gives you a sense of what the materials are. So you're seeing this beautiful wood like panel that's represented in the orange in the center, the white brick, which there's a great building down in DC that we can show you as a representation of what that looks like. It has such a rich feel because it's not just white, it's got gray tones and kind of off white tones within it. It's really quite rich. On the bottom, the idea is the basic retail base would be a black brick. But obviously, as I've talked about, the retail storefronts themselves would bring the life and quality and character to that. On the upper right, you're seeing the idea of the metal panel. We're running that vertically instead of horizontally to make it a little bit more of a modern take. And then the panel above the white brick, you can see the idea of the rivets and little indents between those panels. So even that has a lot of depth to it. And that upper level steps back about three or four feet from the white brick facade. And then finally, the red brick balconies hanging off of the metal panel. I'm sorry, red, red metal balconies hanging off the metal panel. I'm gonna go to the next slide. We're gonna now go down towards Haycock. So this elevation of Haycock is showing the more historic oriented buildings, so the red brick historic building and then the blonde brick. The blonde brick, it kind of hearkens to some of the historic buildings that you'd find in Calorama or some of the neighborhoods in downtown DC, where a blonde mix of bricks was a common use in the DC area. Whereas the red brick is a more typical archetype of historic buildings that you'd see throughout, really any, in any city throughout the area, but including DC. You can see the setback at the roof level where that upper level sets back from the red brick. So the red brick itself really reads as the tower element. You can see the grocer with its awnings. You can see the grocer with its awnings, both the more modern awnings that are the brand awnings at the bottom, and then the bigger, more typical awnings that they require at the upper level, and of course, the signage as well. And this really shows the different, how the site slopes all the way around the building and down towards Haycock, which is the low point on the site. And that's why we're using this base of the blond brick building for that retail space that we talked about before, which would be a daycare and then the outdoor space for the daycare next to it. You go to the next slide? So this is something you hadn't seen, these details developed the last time we shared the project, it just looked like a red brick building. But now, the architecture, our architecture firm has really started creating the inset panel details, both at the top, as well as up the columns, where there's an inset as well, a little medallion at the top of that, as you get to the highest point of each of the columns. My screen is doing some funny things right now. I don't know if yours is.
It's, oh.
My screen is shimmying.
I, I just, you should be good.
That's great. And then also even the mix of the bricks. So the idea being that the columns and kind of outside edge of the brick would have a certain mixture of red and, and, and black components to it and gray components to it. But the panels that separate the actual glazing would be a different mix of the same brick, so maybe have more red to it, so that they read as two different brick colors. And then, of course, gives them more depth and variety to them as well. You can see as the columns come all the way down to the ground, they get even more detail as they get closer to the pedestrian scale. I'm gonna go to the next slide. So this is the blond brick building, and we're gonna go to the next slide, which will show you the detail of it. This building, we kept simple, and so we are trying to spend more of our money on the details at the key corner at Haycock and 7. And then, of course, along the Commons. This building's extremely important as well, but we kept it fairly simple, just a pretty mix of blond bricks, some inset details, and then some panel material at the very top levels. And then we'll go to the next slide. Okay, and then this I presented to you before, which is, which is the pedestrian walkway. And I think the last slide, go to the next one, I think there's-
That's it.
That's it. Okay, great. So with that, thank you all very much for your patience with the technology tonight. And please let us know if you have any questions. We're happy to answer them.
All right. Thank you very much. Really enjoyed that. Looks like you guys have been busy.
Yes.
I get a little anxious seeing all those people not socially distanced.
There will be a day again where we can be together.
Evan, do you, um, do you want to go back to your presentation so you can go back and forth to the earlier slides?
Yeah, sure. Yes.
All right. While you're setting that up, I think I will just go through the, the list again for questions. So Ms. Weiss, I'm gonna start with you. You're at the top of my list. Is that okay? Do you have some comments or questions? And I'll give everybody, I'll give everybody two chances, so.
Okay. I have four at this moment, but I guess I'll just list them all, if that's helpful. The first is, can you discuss the impact of removing the One Earth that was going to go off of Route 7? So are we going to see a reduction in activity over there? Could you talk a little bit more about the impact of losing that connectivity? Can you also tell us, related to that, is there, I can't really tell, is there a truck entrance on that sidewalk that goes into the building? And then the other piece related to that is, how does having that large, one huge building on the corner, does that impact the lead neighborhood development score by reducing connectivity in any way? So a bunch of questions related to the One Earth. Then the additional questions are, you mentioned in the VC document, I think, or somewhere, the SESP, that you have exceeded regulatory compliance requirements for stormwater. I'd like to know what design storm, are we capturing, like, I think compliance is a 10-year storm, are we capturing an 11-year storm, a 25-year storm? That would be helpful to know. And then the last piece is, I think we're asked to make a decision on this next, at our next meeting, maybe in, yeah, our next meeting. But I didn't, I saw that the affordable housing voluntary concessions are still being worked on, so I'd like to better understand the status and when we're likely to see the details there.
Okay, great. I'm happy to hit those questions. Okay, so first, I want to hit the affordable housing one first, and Carly can correct me if I'm wrong, too. So I think the idea is that you're all giving comments back by the end of the month, and then we would end up resubmitting a package in September or October and would likely come back out to the boards, certainly to the planning commission. So this, even if there is a vote, you will still have another bite at the apple. Carly, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. This is really gonna be a recommendation on the first submission, so putting forth comments.
So, okay, so then to your next question, on affordable housing, you know, the RFQ was always 6%. Our proposal's always been 6%. Our voluntary concessions and SCE have always been 6% affordable, so that's not changing. But the comp, the composition of what those units may be, whether they're equal to the mix of the buildings, or there's more two bedrooms and more studios, which has been a request of the city, is something that we are negotiating and we are open to that idea completely. We think that's perfectly fine. So that is something we are still working on. To the extent that there's a desire to have more affordable housing and the city is gonna adjust the land price in order to increase affordable housing, that's great, too. We think affordable housing is extremely important. We'd love to do more. And so that's a separate conversation that I think, I'd assume the council would have to ask that question of us. As for the One Earth, which is, is a change from the old plan, so there was, the One Earth actually does still exist. It sits in this zone right here. It's the same location as where it used to be. It used to be open air. And what we ultimately decided to do, and part of this is based upon the grocer that we had been working with, as we started getting their full loading requirements, which you can see here, all of that gray is loading in order to make the buildings work. And so that One Earth space, which we had hoped would be a little bit more of a retail space and attractive and nice, the loading got so big that that space really just became a loading court. And we were worried that it was never gonna feel as good as we were hoping it was gonna feel. And so what we did is we actually covered it, which allows us to pick up more green, green roof in the apartment building, essentially a platform going over that loading area. It allows us to keep the smells controlled within that space. We then have a set-in gate here, as well as here. The trucks will come in on Alley 1 and go out onto Route 7. So there's no in, there's only an out here. And so there's very limited traffic, quite frankly, going in that zone, which is also good for the project. And then what we also did, in order to deal with the other question which you raised, which is connectivity, we are certainly in the same place from a LEED ND perspective, but we've done two things. We've created a new One Earth between the hotel and the office building, so we still have that type of space. We've created this really cool, what we think is a really special mid-block connection space, which will have artwork and placemaking and lighting and be something really unique and interesting that we think people will come from all around the region to see. And that also allows us to flatten these streets. We've added more retail going back towards the high schools, so that this Street A is more active than it was in our original SCE plan. So we think we've picked up in other places where we can have those celebrated special moments. And then on the Leesburg Pike facade, what is not really shown here is vine pockets and green, and that will grow up the building. We have some really great ideas on placemaking in this sloped zone here. And then by having the grocery have two entrances, both down here and then closer up towards the Commons, and by adding retail along the Commons, that enlivens that entire facade. So we did think through that in detail before we got rid of it, and we ultimately think it's the right move for the project. That hit three of your questions. Stormwater, I would have to hand off to Karen, if that's okay?
Yep. Hello, everybody. Karen White with Walter Phillips. So to talk about stormwater, what we did is we did analyze the one-year storm and the 10-year storm. We are exceeding, well, we are, so what we're doing for the one-year storm, we're reducing the runoff by 30%. For the 10-year storm, we're reducing the runoff for 10%, as discussed during the SCE process. To do this, to address the stormwater, we're using a lot of low-impact development tools like bio-retention, we have some green roofs, private pavement, and we're also integrating some underground storage and pipe systems as well to meet, to, to reduce those, those runoffs.
Right. Okay.
All right. Ms. Weiss, does that cover you for now?
Thank you.
All right. Ms. Teetz, do you have some questions for us?
Yeah, I, I have a few. First, I do like the new modern architecture. I think it kind of complements the new high school coming in, because the high school has a very modern look. But I am concerned about the fact that there's a lot of very much light colors. Whenever I see a building that has a lot of light colors in, within like three to five years, you see a lot of pollution, kind of black, smudgy kind of stuff on the buildings. And it just seemed like there's a lot, a lot of light colors here, and I, and I just think that, like, the material, especially the fiber concrete panels, they just seem to pick up a lot of dirt and dust, like pollution kind of stuff. And so I just wondered, like, maybe we couldn't have a little bit less of these lighter panels and maybe, I mean, I, I like the colors on the hotel, like, I wouldn't mind to see more vibrant colors, maybe, rather than so much white. It's just very, very light. And it does seem like a lot of fiber concrete panels, like more than there were before. And so I, I wonder, too, about like the quality of those. You know, I've heard people say that they don't last as well as some of the other materials. So I'm just, you know, I'm a little bit concerned about that. The other thing is, I know with the extension of the building B4, of, like, when that happens and those parking, I guess those parking spaces will go in as they are now, and then later in Phase 2, when B4 moves 60 feet into where that parking lot is, you're replacing the parking at B3. Do we have an agreement for that now? Do we know how that's gonna work? Like, do we know specifically how many spots are leaving? Because obviously, I also wonder, should that lot be reconfigured a different way? Is it going to be reconfigured a different way so that when that chunk is taken out, it makes more sense? Because all I've ever seen is overlay the current parking lot as it is. So I'd just like to know that agreement. Does, I also wondered if Alley 1 has a sidewalk, or is it just an alley? Because that was the only one it looked at that didn't seem like it had a sidewalk. And then finally, I'm the planning commissioner rep for Wrexham Park, and I just have to point out, like, from our last meeting, that they're still concerned about the lack of recreational space in there. They just aren't sure if the common drive is gonna provide enough recreational space and enough active play areas for the kids, so they continue to be concerned about that. And the other thing is, since we're, we're having to move the Washington Gas Exchange underground equipment from the corner of the, the current high school property down to our park at West End. So we've been told that it's gonna have to move a lot of stuff in that park. And if you've been there, there's extensive native plant-ins that are actually quite lovely at this point, they, you know, they, they're four or five years old. So we've been told that we will be made whole after that, and that, that is your responsibility. And I'd like to hear from you that, once they go in and put this equipment in, that the, you know, the benches, the trash can, the arch, all of that, all of that stuff will come back as it is now, and that we won't lose that part of the park. So that, and that's all I have.
Okay, so, oh, there's an echo. Is somebody, have me on a-
I think if Melissa-
Is somebody just in mute?
There you go.
Okay, great. Okay, so, great questions. Thank you, Commissioner Teetz. So, so on the, on the color issue, we heard that comment from you before, so we thought about, we thought about some ideas there. Most of the white that you're seeing, and I'll talk about the panel in a moment, but most of the white that you're seeing will be brick. And we have some great examples of where that brick has been used already and has weathered really nicely. And I think part of that is because the white brick itself has a lot of gray in it and mixtures of colors, that even as it weathers over time, it doesn't get that, it's not a stark white where you really see that pollution that you're talking about. But it's a great point. So we can also bring in photo images of buildings that have used that brick, so you can get a sense of how they've weathered over time or give you an idea of where to look and even drive by. But we understood that that was a concern of yours. So that's why more of the white color in this project is now brick versus panel. Most of the panel is gray. The hotel, even though it's showing as a white, is more of a gray material, too. There isn't more panel now than there was. It's actually very similar to what our SCE was, and we've really kept quite, quite a bit of brick on almost all the buildings. There are, there is some panel, and panel itself has changed quite a bit. So there's a difference between, you know, it's not EFS, which is, you know, the lowest end and obviously does get beat up over time. These panels are largely high upholding, so they're far away from ground level and less susceptible to damage. And of course, we will have a building maintenance program to make sure that we're maintaining everything. And we're happy to come back the next time and show a little bit more of the details of how those will be installed and what they might look like. And then we can also look at color as well. So that's good feedback. On the parking agreement, we, we are working on an MOU with the schools, which we are hoping to sign before the end of the month, which require us to park, come build, and your thought about rethinking that school parking lot at that nudge one either. So the idea being, when we come in in three years, four years, whatever it may be, for an SESP for that school, I'm sorry, for that office building, we could have a whole, you know, a conversation about what, what the setting is, how much parking is needed, what did it look like? And then we're happy to have that at the time. But we, we will be signing that agreement, making it part of our work. On the Wrexham Park issue, I know that issue has come up over and over again, and I, I struggle with this one a little bit because there's not much we can do. You know, obviously, our goal here is to create as much tax revenue to pay for the bonds of the school. And, you know, the more open space you have at the grade level, the less, the less building you have, and thus the less building you have, the less tax revenue you can generate. So what we've been thinking about instead of just this open space is more of the whole 40-acre system of this Virginia Tech and the county, and the Womata parcel. And so what you're not seeing here is what we're talking to the county about. Number one, it's the extension of the common space itself for another, almost 400 feet out to Virginia Tech side, where that, where their site tends to be more open space and more of a campus green. They have a number of great urban plazas. And then as you go on to the Womata site, the open space continues in a linear fashion almost all the way to the metro. And then on the very far side of that property, we're actually looking at doing a dog park and some rec courts. So, or a record. So the idea here being, you're right, in the heart of the retail energy part of the project, we don't have the space for recreational activities, but we do have the opportunity here for this to be a festival space. This would be the big festival, some other space, or the rec. Anyway, that's, that's something, obviously, we're not sharing tonight yet. On the Washington Gas issue, Karen, how much, how engaged you are with this, I assume when we finish the work, we'd be replanting native species there and returning it to attractive fashion, but I have not, I admit, I have not been very engaged in that process. That's been handled by somebody else in my office.
Sorry, you're breaking up a little bit. Was the question about the Washington Gas line, you're talking about the relocation at the regulator station?
Yeah, so-
Yeah, exactly.
So, so, yeah, there's the West End Park, and there's a whole site plan that went through, and there's a whole, I don't know the planting off the top of my head, I assume it's native species, and it's a whole plan that's been under review.
Right. And, and I was at several of the Wrexham Parks meetings where we went over it. And I think the problem was, is that they were, they had a draw-in, and the draw-in wasn't clear that, you know, what was gonna hap, that everything was going to be replanned exactly as it was, and that they would be, basically, they were talking about that they want the park to be made whole as much as possible. And nothing was totally, like, written down, that, at least what they, what they received was kind of some draw-ins. And so they were just concerned about it, and I just wanted to bring it up, that that still is a concern of theirs, that, you know, after it's done, they, it, it could be, you know, that they don't get some of the things back. In fact, one of the drawings, we had specifically said that things would be removed, but didn't say it would be replaced, you know, put back. So that was their concern.
Okay, we can follow back up, because then maybe, we can follow back up on that plan and, and maybe, maybe to make sure everyone's seen the latest plan, too, because the latest plan does have, like, details with actual plants and everything, so we can circle back on that.
Yeah, and it may be that they haven't, they haven't been able to meet for a while. So, you know, so that probably didn't help either. So maybe they haven't. I just know the last time it was brought up, there wasn't as much, there wasn't as much detail as that they wanted. And they were told that there would be more detail. And I think they just haven't been able to see it yet.
Okay, we can work with everyone to make sure that that gets circulated.
All right, great. Ms. Teetz, does that cover your questions for now?
Yes, it does. Thank you for the responses. They make a lot of sense. Thanks.
Awesome. Thank you. I'm happy to help.
All right, Mr. Puentes, we're up to you.
Thank you very much. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Really pleased about the connections to the Virginia Tech site and the Womata site. It's it's going to make this whole things just so much better. Really glad to see that that's all moving. You talked about the why the underground parking, why you moved away from that, which I understand. You said that it was 40% more expensive and that was for reasons you were going to mention. I think I missed why you said it was 40, 40% more expensive. So I want to hear a little bit about that. Also like to see if you thought about reducing some of the parking? If you would prefer to actually build less? There's there's calculations in the material that are talking about the city's code. I've often contended that we overbuild the city, overpark the city anyway. And we need to reduce parking, especially given where, you know, where this park, where the, where this development is. I am disappointed we don't have the traffic study. There's nothing like looking through a good old traffic study. But look forward to seeing that. I understand why we don't have it, given that the Route seven issue is not resolved yet. And I'm really disturbed, I guess, thinking about that. You know, I really wanted to make, I really wanted this site to do what it could to reduce the horrible traffic on that road there. Just the way that the way that it moves. I know you can only do what you can do. I know that Fairfax County DOT and Virginia DOT may not be the most open minded sometimes. But it's such an opportunity to change that from really a high speed, awful boulevard right now to something much more special. And I really hope that there's something we can do. I hope saving the planning commission can do, that they were happy to help. I agree with Ms. Teetz. I'm much happier with the modern architecture. I'd love to see you do throughout the whole thing. I think it's great. I do love the name, West Falls. Fantastic. And I'm also quite happy with that stairs. I thought that losing that through street there was going to be a negative. I think the solution is very creative and I like the stairs very much. Last thing, the placemaking principles. Obviously, since we're doing this, the world has changed a whole lot. And I would love to see equity and inclusion be one of those principles. You know, I don't know how it really manifests itself necessarily. But we just before we had this work session, we talked about the city's public art policy, where that's actually a big piece of it. It's one of the, one of the tenants in that, in that policy. So to make it consistent, that may be one, that may be something for you to consider. So, you know, as we think about public art and the visual aspects of this site. But overall, it's great. Really happy to see it. Thanks very much.
Great. Yeah, I love that idea. Thank you on the equity inclusion. That's a great idea. And it may go in with the, almost the eclectic nature of the city as well because there's such a true economic diversity and racial diversity in the city. And we may be able to make that almost included within that pillar. I love that. So to answer your three questions, the TIS study should be done by the end of the month. So the Gore Slay team, we got far enough along on the intersection that B dot is allowing us to submit it. They're working on the TIS. We already have most of the conclusions of the TIS, which is that if we are able to achieve the left in and left out of the commons, the level of service that Haycock and seven goes up. So even with all the development, it actually gets better over time, which is really great for the city residents. To your point, I agree. And it would have been wonderful if we could have even shrunk Route seven. It's likely not going to go that direction. You know, I think the dot's headed in the opposite direction. But the good news is the lanes themselves will shrink. There is an area where we'll have a pedestrian refuge crossing as you, as from the south side across to the commons. It's not showing on this plan because it's the other plan. But yeah, we've not had a lot of success so far getting Route seven to be kind of the iconic boulevard we'd love for it to be. On our side of the street, it will be beautiful and it will be landscaped and treed and be pretty. The other two questions are great. So and I think you're in this industry, so this might speak to you. You know, we had underwritten, I'll share these numbers, a very healthy $50,000 a space cost for underground parking, $40,000, $46,000. And it came in at $74,000 a space, which just was exactly, it was shocking for everyone, including, I think, our general contractor that we were working with, which is Clark, which is a great firm. And in the end of the day, what it came down to is we do have some soil issues on the north side of the site, which was generating some of the costs. But a lot of it was just the inefficiency of it. It wasn't big enough and deep enough to get the value savings that you would typically get. So in order to make it less expensive for space, we'd have to go much deeper and bigger, in which case you lose all the cost benefits altogether because overall the parking gets more expensive. And so given, you know, it's one of these decisions with some hindsight, thank God we made. Because given where COVID is, obviously, the economy is not getting better. So if we hadn't made some of these cost saving decisions back into December, we'd be in a situation now where we'd be grossly over budget and have the COVID crisis. So anyway, so to some extent, we're really happy we made that decision. But it was shocking to all of us. Anyway, yeah, so that is, oh, and then reduce parking. So let me get the numbers to you. We can send this to separately, Amy. Maybe let's work through this. I think we may have reduced parking from our original SCE a little bit. We definitely are asking for parking reductions below the city standard for some of the uses. And we've thought about maybe reducing even a little bit more from the retail side. So I think we're in a pretty decent place for retail, for overall parking. But one of the nice things about the garages both being above grade is to the extent we get to that wonderful place in 20, 30 years where we have autonomous vehicles and those aren't really utilized as much, there is this opportunity to do something future for the city that's economic development oriented on those parcels. And they're nice, big, you know, 120 by 200 foot parcels. So you really could do, you know, whether it's an office building or residential building or some other use. Anyway, another benefit of not building below grade, that space just ends up being wasted if it's not used. But thank you. Thanks for your questions. I appreciate them.
Evan, I just wanted to say quickly about the parking is that, yes, we're within the range. That was approved as part of the SCE. But relatively speaking, what the parking that we're proposing against the Falls Church ordinance, I think we're, the parking that we're providing is about 30% less than what the ordinance would regularly require. So we are definitely reducing parking overall.
Great. Thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Puentes, that covers your questions for now. All right. Mr. Wodisca, you have some comments, questions, ideas?
Yeah, sure. Just a couple of comments and questions. Just to really follow on with what you're talking about, the parking. I'm not clear, is there any underground parking or it's just these two garages?
No, there is. So there's underground parking underneath the condominium that is specific to the condominium and is extremely expensive in that location, unfortunately. But we felt like it needed to stay. And then there's underground parking under block A for the grocery as well, which has its own parking. And then the retail and multifamily parking share block D two, as well as senior housing, the hotels, some retail and office share block B three.
Okay, great. Yeah, and I guess my question was related to the grocer as well and how that flow works. When I first looked at this, it looked like garage, you know, D two is quite a ways from the grocer. So.
Can you go to slide 38, Evan? That might help.
Yeah, actually, well, let me show it here first and I can go to slide 38, too. Can you guys see my screen with the parking and the Haycock seven intersection?
Yeah.
Yeah. So so you, so to get to the grocer, the block D, above grade garage and the below grade parking connect, which is great. So you can either get to the grocer parking off Haycock seven at the traffic light and come in and make a left turn into the grocery nest. Or you can come in off Mustang Alley and go straight through. Or you can come in off Street B, circulate down through the garage and connect to it this way. So that that was kind of one of the nice things about creating the bridge connection, that pedestrian bridge connection, is you're actually going over the parking connection between the two buildings. So this grocery nest is directly under the grocer and you come up through the elevators and escalators at the corner. And then the the rest of the retail parking goes up the ramp in the space and you'd come out obviously in Street B.
Okay, yeah, that makes a lot more sense to me.
Right.
And I like that design a lot. So if you want to, if you want to get to all that retail that we're looking in the commons, you're not able to go into that, that parking that you're showing here on this slide. You have to go into, you're in Garage D if you want to go to the retail.
D or B. Yeah, so there'll be about 50 retail spaces in Block B. And then, of course, evenings and weekends, when the office spaces are vacant, that would be retail parking as well. And then Block D is the, most of your retail parking is the first two to three levels of the Block D garage. So you're either coming out here into what's going to be a special space with these really cool placemaking elements above, going out to the commons, or you're coming out here and walking through the one earth, or you're coming out on Street A and walking to the commons here. You can also, of course, park in the grocery parking illegally and come out to the street that way. But that really is meant to be grocer parking.
Okay, great. And when you talk about the reduction in parking, I certainly agree with Mr. Puentes here. Was that primarily based on the access to the proximity to the metro? Or just because of some other objective with reducing parking?
Both. It's both. Yeah. So so for the apartment buildings, actually, for all the buildings, office, apartment, hotel, condo, there's clearly some benefit to being a quarter mile from the metro, especially for the apartments where it's most pronounced and also for hotel employees, retail employees, senior housing employees. So we're providing less employee parking than you typically would in a project. And then secondly, which is new, I don't think we shared this last time, we're doing more shared parking throughout the project. So even the apartment building will have some dedicated spaces. About half of the spaces will be dedicated, about half will be shared. So those spaces will be apartment parkers, you know, on the evenings and weekends. But you may have office parkers or senior housing resident people or retail customers parking in those spaces during the day. And so instead of building a ton of parking and having it sit largely vacant, you know, if it's residential parking and when the apartment renters are away, or largely vacant office parking, we're really sharing the parking across the site for almost all the uses, with the exception of condo and grocer.
Okay, great. In terms of, since the the plan has shifted a little bit in various places, is the mix of the housing options changed? Are we still generally what we agreed to in the SCE? Or has the, there become more condo, more two bedroom, more one bedroom, micro, whatever? Has the mix stayed the same or there's been a big adjustment there?
Great questions. So the overall amount of condo versus apartments has stayed the same. So we have a, we have a little bit less than 100,000 feet of micro units. Well, I'll give you the numbers. We have 179,000 square feet of condo. We were at 175 at the SCE. So there's about 4,000 square feet more condo. There is 4,000 square feet less micro. So instead of 100, we have 96,000 square feet of micro. And then we have 275,000 square feet of apartments, which we always had. So those numbers have largely stayed the same. The mix is slightly different. We're at 399 apartment units. And we do have, and I need, I'm going to walk through with staff over this over the next week. We do have some more two bedrooms and and we have much smaller units on average. So what we did was, we have a 750 square foot average unit size for the building, which is about 25% smaller than really any other buildings in the city. And so we do now have some more two bedrooms, but they're small. They're like 850 to 900 square foot two bedrooms versus a more typical 11 to 12 or even 1,400 square feet. So we, even though there's more two bedrooms, we don't expect it to be something that will attract a lot of families with kids, more of kind of the the couple with a home office or, you know, two roommates that might share an apartment. And it allows us to come in at a less expensive price for a two bedroom unit because they're smaller. But we can share the unit mix. I'm actually, this came up at the council the other night. So we were working on an exhibit that'll show exactly what it was and where it's headed.
Okay, that's helpful as well. And, you know, you talked, you just mentioned, you know, a family, a partner, a couple with a home office. And at the outset of this presentation, you talked a little bit about COVID and, you know, the environment that we're in. What's your, this is a general question since we have this phase two. And I know I'm asking way into the future. But what is your general feel about the commercial real estate and the likelihood that, you know, the new environment that we're in will have on your ability to to build phase two? I mean, I know it was always a question, but has there been some shift in that since?
Yeah, it's a great, great question. So it's easier to answer a little bit on the residential side. I feel like on the apartment side, we started, Bezuto is our apartment manager here. We're already working with them on ideas for how we can break down the common spaces into smaller modules so people can have privacy, yet be in common space. We've, part of what we love about our plan is we have these smaller units. We actually have more studios and junior ones, a lot of junior ones. And what that allows is for people to afford to live by themselves if they don't want to live with a roommate and gives them a little bit more control over their environment. And that's something we think people are going to desire in the market. So on the residential side, we have a little bit more sense of where that market might go. The office side obviously is a little bit more questionable. And I've heard just as many people say they think office square footage will go up because people will want more protective space and more offices within office space and thus will require more square footage. We had kind of gone from a high in the 90s down to the, you know, the micro square footage where you have, you know, six to eight people per thousand square feet kind of shoved in office space. And so more than likely, that will go away, at least for the short term. But at the same time, with telecommuting, you know, a lot of us have been very efficient working from home for the last four to five months. So that certainly should change the amount of office space people are need. So I think the jury's still out on what it means for office long term. What I hope it means long term, though, is a lot more people have flexibility about when and how they commute. And what that should ultimately do is the idea of, hey, everyone needs to be in the office at 9:00 AM every single day will likely go away long term. And that should start helping us with some of the traffic congestion issues we have as a region and maybe allow us to start building places that are more pedestrian oriented. So that's my kind of goal and hope. But, you know, obviously, time will tell. It's hard to know, right? In the Spanish flu season, and I don't know what people said in 1918, if you ask them what it would be like in 1920. But my hope to God is we get through this and we all start going back to normal life and normal being with each other as people because it's fairly stifling, obviously.
Okay, I appreciate your perspective on it. Much more informed than mine right now. So that's good to hear, an expert on that. It is, and pardon my not knowing what's happening with the school. I'm not sure, are they, and maybe you don't know either. Are they finishing earlier now that they're able to work sort of uninterrupted by, or planning to work uninterrupted for a longer period of time? I guess they were able to do that throughout the spring here. Does that, and if they are, does that impact your timeline in terms of when you would start construction?
No, it wouldn't impact us. What we've heard from them, we meet with them every other week. I know they're still on track for December. I don't know if they've, if they're even faster than that. I would leave that to them to answer that question. But yeah, it doesn't move up our schedule. We had hoped to be, I mean, this is a big, complex project. Our hope had been to be fully ready to go come, you know, January. We're probably a number of months behind that. And then, then with COVID, of course, who knows? The big question is when we'll be able to finance the project? So I don't really think their schedule really impacts our schedule as much as we once thought it did. I think we thought, you know, if they were delayed, oh, my God, what will we do? And I think now we're fine.
Okay, all right. And, you know, other than, I don't have any other questions, just other comments. I do like the modern architecture. I think that the breakup of that building on the corner of Seven and Haycock is probably as best as it could be done here. It does look like quite a large building, but with the with the various materials and breakup, I think that's, it'll do a lot to minimize its impact. And I support it for sure, whatever, you know, I can do to get that traffic light. That entrance looks like it was going to be a problem for a long time. This looks like an elegant solution for everybody. Hopefully, that can, whatever your meeting was today, didn't set that back too much. Because I think it would be really beneficial for, for, obviously, your your development, but also let's cross the street and solve the neighborhood's problem, I think, for the most part. So otherwise, I'm really happy to see it. And there's definitely some improvements that the other commissioners talked about.
Great.
I like what I see. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wodisca. Mr. Stevens, what do you have?
Well, I've got a combination of questions and comments. If you don't mind, I can just kind of, kind of run through all of these and then you can come back with any replies that you have on the question. Kind of run through all of these and then uh, you can come back uh, with any replies that you have on the on the questions. On the architecture, I'll pile on in support of what you've done. I think it's uh, it's starting to look uh, quite good. And it does remind me of the war. And uh, that would be, that would be. Um, regarding stormwater, curious as to where the BMPs will be located that will involve public interaction. Uh, the ones that are kind of at grade level. Uh, wanted to confirm that the commons will incorporate a curbless. Uh, street design, which will help in a number of community events.
Yep.
I wanted to point out that the city is in the process of replacing its streetlights with uh, with new LED fixtures. And so it would be good to coordinate so that it looks like uh, the West Falls project does indeed uh, become part of the city. I think streetlights can help, uh, help do that. Be good to know on the condo building, what the mix is of the 127 units. As to how many of those are two bedroom, one bedroom and so forth. I think we have that for the apartment building, but I haven't seen that for the for the.
Okay.
Then I have a number of questions on the environmental side. Uh, first of all, regarding uh, lead. Uh, it's generally listed in the documents, either lead or equivalent. And I'm just wondering if you've been able to resolve that indeed we can, we can count on lead being used for all of the the different applications.
Okay.
Uh, regarding uh, EV charging stations, uh, stations, uh, in the um. Uh, obligations that you have voluntary concessions, 10 equipped and 40 uh, future, you know, with the conduit. And I'm just wondering, is that just in one building or is that through all of the blocks? Uh, just curious as to. Where that commitment will apply. And I would certainly encourage, I mean, I understand, you know, it's expensive. On the equipment, uh, part of it right now to be conservative uh, on that. But conduit, it certainly shouldn't cost a huge amount to do that. So. I would think as much as we can to prepare for uh, electric charging station, the better because if it's not there at the beginning. It becomes a real obstacle down the road for people to adopt EVs. And one of the things that we found out with the eight. Chargers that we put in at City Hall is that they're very well used and we compared statistics through Electrify America who provided it. And it's one of the highest percentage uses here uh, at the city. So we do have uh, keen interest within the city on electric vehicles.
Yep.
Um. On the fast charger, we've mentioned just one fast charger, but uh, the company EB Go, and you might be familiar with them, but they will actually finance it. They will pay for it.
Yep.
Put it in on the property. In fact, we have a couple installed at the Eden Center and they will pay um, a monthly rental for the use of the space. So that's, that's a pretty good deal. Uh, but they will require two spaces, not just one. So that may be something. And we can certainly help put you in touch with uh, the people that we've talked to at EB Go, uh, to kind of work through some of those details. Uh, one of the things that we've observed with the founders row is that they've had quarterly meetings with the public. Uh, as the construction has emerged. Um, and this worked out very well. So that makes something that you want to utilize. It certainly engenders a very positive uh, reaction from. Uh, neighbors who start out a little suspicious as to what this all means, but when they can talk to the uh, to the folks directly that are. Responsible for building it, it seems to 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 go a long way to help. Um, interested in the public art process as to whether it will be something like is been used for founders row. Uh, you certainly have a huge amount of public art that's been programmed there. So that'll be very important. Um, uh, I noticed that one of the partners that you're going to have for the other two sites is HIT. And they have, I don't know if you've uh, had a chance to visit their building over in Maryfield. It's an 8,000 square foot demo building that shows the latest and sustainable technologies. But anyway, one of the things that it that it demonstrates is the mass timber and I know council member Littenhouse raised that on Monday. For especially for the office building. I think that would be a way to really set that building aside and make it very attractive to a high end corporate. Uh, clients. I know it's more expensive, but uh, could be that you could just find the right fit there. And then finally, I'm just wondering if the energy use intensity calculations have been developed yet for any of the buildings? And if they have, if that's something that you can share with us. So I'll leave it.
Awesome. Okay, so I'm going to answer the questions I can and then I'll. Have um, the environmental team and Amy pull up some slides about stormwater management and other things of that sort. Um. So starting with uh, the commons, uh, you are correct, the center of commons is curbless. So the. Um, that whole kind of open space bleeding into the streets is curbless. It's curbed to get to the sidewalks on the right side. So as you go towards the building, that part is curved, but the whole center area is curbless, if that's helpful. Um, the uh, streetlights, so um, I'll, I'll have a, you know. Our civil team can follow up and our landscape team can follow up to make sure we understand what the uh, city standard LED fixture is. Um, and see if we're using that and they can answer whether we have that in our plan already. Uh, condo unit mix, I'm going to defer to Hoffman for a second. Um, I like the idea of the founders real quarterly meetings. That's great. Um, on the HIT uh, construction, we do know we have, you know, obviously we have a relationship with them. Um, we did look at mass timber for the office building and quite frankly, for the condo, um, and the residential. And one of the issues we've run into is just. There aren't a lot of contractors in this market yet doing it. And so because it's not. Um, become a standard in this market yet, it's much more expensive than it would typically be, even more than you would think it would be. Uh, whereas if you're doing it in the Pacific Northwest or. I think there is a a place in North Carolina where they're producing the materials. It's a lot less expensive. Um, so. And we also didn't want to be the guinea pig in the market. So hiring a general contractor and being the first ones to have them in the market using it. Um, you know, if this were the fourth or fifth or 10th or 20th building that somebody's built within the market. Uh, number one, pricing will come down, but number two, you'd feel more confident. Um, and so that made us a little bit nervous, especially on. Condo side, uh, where there's so much liability potential with residents, um, suing you at some point if you did something wrong. But we did, we love it too. It's beautiful. We love what it does of the interior of the space. And I think that is something, you know, maybe that's a phase two goal, um, one of the future buildings. Um, by that point, hopefully the market will have caught up. Um, okay, so with that, I'm going to hand it over on fast chargers. Um, and I have worked with EB Go before, I'll hand this over to Amy and she can talk through. Um, oh, sorry, lead, lead equivalent, EV charging stations, fast charge.
And the bio.
And the bio and the and the SWM, yep, storm and management bio locations. And then energy usage calc. So I'll leave that between you, Amy and Karen. I'm going to stop presenting. Let you present.
Okay, so you, I I hope I'm capturing all of your questions. Um, but you had asked where the uh, bio retention that people can interact with is. And those are generally located in blue green here. Um. Gabby, if you want to add anything or or Karen, but that's, I think that was the the question that was asked is where they were.
And I think the other thing to note is that, so that's the bio retention, correct? That would be um, that the folks who interact with. But are, there is also a permeable pavement, um, sidewalk that runs through that area. So that's another. Low impact development stormwater management measure that, you know, can be seen um, by the public.
Okay.
And then also at the bottom, as you get towards route seven, we're hoping with the new entrance feature that will be able to pick back up. More of the storm and management and green space that we had before that we lost because of the old design. So um, another reason to try to get the intersection design the way we like it, uh, picks up more open space.
Yeah, people really seem to like those uh, those features.
Yeah, agreed.
Okay, and then your next question was about um, whether we were going to use lead or an equivalent and we are currently um. Uh, proceeding with lead. Uh, we are meeting with the Environmental Sustainability Council or Commission tomorrow night. So. These slides are, were designed um, for their meeting, but we're happy to share with, share them with you. I I must. Uh, caveat this that I created these slides, but I I'm not the expert in what they mean. So um. You know, tune in tomorrow night and we'll, we'll definitely have our um, sustainable sustainability. Um, sustainable building partners uh, join us and they will be able to talk at length about all of this information.
Yeah, my question is just focused on whether you're going to use the lead standards as opposed to something called an equivalent.
Yeah, we we are targeting the lead standard or not the equivalent.
Good.
Um, you asked about EV charging. So. Per the VCs, we have um, the 11 charging spaces, which includes one fast charging station. The 30 conduit spaces, but um, like you mentioned EB Go, we are exploring additional mechanisms to increase that capacity and potentially. Bring in a um, third party that would, you know, install and maintain and um, create, generate revenue from those. Charging stations. So we are thinking about that. Um, Kate Walker from the city has also shared information with us about another program. So we are, we are definitely looking into that. Um. And then you also asked about the public art process. Evan, I don't know if you wanted to comment.
Yeah, yeah. Actually, why don't we do energy use intensity calculations? Karen, is that something we have yet? And then we can hit the art.
I think that's this, right?
Uh, no, that's, it's actually, yeah, it's something that uh, is modeled by by the engineers.
Right. I think it's that box model analysis.
I think it would be more per building and we are not at that point on the individual building um, development yet.
So you're showing 50 for building A, 40 for uh, B1. Yeah, that that's good. That's.
Those are the targets, but there, we don't have the models uh, yet to um.
Right.
Develop that.
You can share those, get them. That would be interesting.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, and then Karen and Gabby, do we, do we have the city standard LED fixture as part of our plan?
Actually, we don't have a standard yet. It's just in the process of being.
Okay.
It's it's like real time. It's occurring right now. But uh, my point was, you know, as we do this, it would be good to coordinate with the city where possible.
Got it. Okay, and um, so the last one, condo unit mix, uh, someone from the Hoffman team, do you guys have that mix?
Um. Hey Evan, can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Um. I do have that mix. Um, I am, was been trying to pull it up.
Okay, while you're pulling it up, I'll talk about public art. So uh, your question about public art is is great and the thought there is. Um, you know, maybe these are separate sessions, but the public, I'm sorry, the placemaking amenity plan will refer to types of art. And then the thought is there will be different processes for the different parts of art. So some of the art will be artists that will find that will use on the site. Um, obviously we'd love to talk to local um, City of Falls Church experts who have um, contacts and thoughts about artists. And then the other idea, the school, the garage building that's closest to the school, we really do want to work with the school on that specifically. Um, and I believe if I remember correctly, uh, one of the, or the head of the art department at the school has done some of this type of public artwork in the past. Um, in the city. So there's an opportunity to work with that person who kind of has an understanding for this concept. Uh, for the art and sculpture and other public amenities throughout the building. What we did in. Uh, my project at Pike and Rose in Rockville is we met with staff on a quarterly basis as we started selecting items. And the staff would bring in kind of the experts from the community that were art related or people from the art committee in Montgomery County. So that they were getting to be part of that process and see what we were doing. We did that for two or three quarters and we got to a point where they were kind of so happy with the direction we were going that they just said, we don't really need to have the meetings anymore. We trust you and just do do a great job. Um, that's what our hope is here too, that we'll do that. We'll get to a place where there's a level of trust that we're selecting pieces that are exciting and um, and go from there. But of course. We have no issue at all with having as much engagement as people are interested in.
Okay.
Okay.
And I have that unit mix.
Uh, did we lose you, Robin, or are you still there? Oh.
Evan, I have it too.
Okay, go for it, Amy, go for it.
So we have 23 one bedrooms, 10 one bedroom dens, 14 junior twos, 21 two bedrooms, 20. Two bedroom dens and 23 bedrooms.
Well, thank you. That was funny. Okay.
Okay.
All 12 questions answered.
Yeah, uh, just a a quick final comment. Uh, if you do, you know, keep in your, in your back pocket, the possibility, if you, if you run a little short. On the financing and your capital stack, that there's a property assessed clean energy option, which can cover up to 20%. Of the financing. So the general assembly this year in the state passed some legislation that makes it easier and provides help to localities to develop those ordinances. So. And it's just something to keep in mind. Uh, and then finally for Tordi Gallos, I'm just wondering, what do we need to do to win a CNU charter award?
Uh, keep going the way we're going. And get it in there. It would be, be thrilled for all of us to to get, hang that on the wall.
Saw the warp just received one.
That's right.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Stevens. Um, I think I've covered everyone except me. I won't give too many comments because it's getting late. And I think everyone covered a lot of good stuff. Um, I, uh, that, this. The challenge with the entrance off of seven and what the county wants and doesn't want, what they used to want, what they want now. That's gotta be maddening, but um, hopefully, um. You know, enough people across the street there realize the value of being able to get over to development. And then also. I would hope that the Womata stuff, um, moving forward would also further encourage everyone to realize that. Having a functional intersection there is going to help a lot of people, not just this development.
Yeah. So hopefully. Yeah, it's a great point. And I'd say this, the community leaders for both associations, uh, totally get it and are very supportive. And I've been in communication with the supervisor about that. Um, and I think the struggle, of course, is balancing. Um, you know, homeowners who may have been there longer and who particularly live on Chestnut and um, Gordons and deal with that cut through traffic. So. There's a balance, but I do agree with you. I think the vast majority of people understand the benefit of having a safe connection over to um, the project.
Yes. Um. I, there was a note in the, it was like a staff report for city council last night where they, where there's a specific comment about. Uh, requesting the addition of several commercial uses not explicitly listed. That the daycare, did you, did that ever come up? I didn't.
Yep. Yeah, so it's the daycare, which um, which when we presented to the council the other day, the vast majority of council members seemed supportive of, which was great. And then the other use was um, a kennel use. And this is kind of the doggy daycare model that's become really popular in um, various main streets around the country. Uh, where people drop their dog off during the day, um, so that they're not alone, home alone. Um, at some point, given COVID, the dogs will start dropping us off for their, for our daycare. But anyway, um. It's considered a kennel use. And so while it's not a real kennel, uh, it's a use that we've asked for. I don't know, Amy, were there any other?
Yeah, I was just going to say, the 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 purpose of that part is really to clarify the uses that. Are allowed in the zone and you know, it's, it's making sure that there are, are retail uses that may not currently be enumerated in the ordinance that we would. You know, you would typically expect in this kind of environment, um, would be allowed. So and then there's also some sort of the uh, newer uses that. Aren't also kind of contemplated in the ordinance. So we want to make sure that we can do food trucks and that we could have a podcasting studio. And that we can have all those kinds of uh, fun funky retail uses that are popping up throughout the country. Um, we just want to make sure that we're able to do that here.
Drive through COVID testing.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, and I just wanted, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't like a bunch of tattoo callers and things like that, but that's.
We are, we are keeping the list of prohibited uses the same.
All right. Um, and then uh, I, it's always whenever I look at these drawings and stuff, it's always striking the grade. You know, I go to the school all the time and you don't really think about that grade. Um. You know, I, I think we talked about this a little bit on uh, Broad Street Route seven. You know, you have now some retail frontage. Are you, is, how are you dealing with the grade there?
Yep. So most of the grade is picked up in front of the grocery store. Um, and then the, when you get to the retailers along route seven, that's relatively flat. So that, that works quite well. Um, because the grocery is the vast majority of that frontage. It's part of the reason that's such a big building. Um, the way the grocery store is handled is obviously it's really on the second floor of the building, but it comes to grade. Um, when you get up to the top of the hill. And our thought for how to deal with that from a placemaking perspective was. Um, to come up with a green wall, uh, kind of growth on the wall. So below the grocer, there's a nice green um, covering. And um, and then think about art, art and element, art and sculptural elements as you walk up that sidewalk. So as, even as you're walking up the hill. It doesn't feel like you're just walking up a hill. There's something pretty to look at. Some benches, places to sit.
The grade is walkable. It's not going to be.
Yeah.
And then, and related to that is on the inside with the stairs, which seem really cool. And I know this came before, so I'm sure you'll have an answer, but. What is the solution for people who aren't able to walk upstairs?
Yes, excellent question. So the, so the whole idea is that the garage itself obviously has elevators. So you'd be able to. Access it, go up the elevators and come out the other side as well. Um, and it will be somewhat porous between the garage and the. Um, and it will be somewhat porous between the garage and the pedestrian connection on the top. So you can kind of pop right into the pedestrian connection. That was a question from the council. Right now, the elevator is on the opposite side of the drive aisle. So we are going to try to see if there's a way to get it on the south side of the drive aisle. We're not sure if we can. Uh, but there will be elevator access too.
Yeah. I mean, I would just encourage you to figure out a way to make that feel like not a different experience, both for obviously disabled people, but people with strollers and things like that. Um, because it could be, I think we talked about this last time, but it could be a pretty cool feature. It's sort of weird, like this, we're, it could be a pretty cool feature, but if some people feel like I don't ever get to experience that because I gotta go cross the traffic and over there and up the thing. And by the time I get to the top, my friends are all gone. I don't know what's going on.
Yeah, we've heard that comment. So we're working, we're working on that. The, what it would mean most likely is that on, at least on that ground level, if you're, or on some of the levels, if you're parking, you'd have to walk across the drive aisle to get to the elevator within the garage to get out on that side of the building versus where the, the, right now, the elevator is closer to the parking. But that might be an appropriate trade-off in order to make, um.
I'd make that trade-off. I'd make that trade-off. Uh, because it's not that unusual, I don't think, to have to walk across. I mean, you gotta walk across, drive things to get a parking lot into a building 99% of the time.
We'll work with the Tordi Gallas team on that.
And then this is just a minor question I had. Um, you mentioned that uh, Street A and Street B don't connect anymore. You got rid of that, even that cut through the center area. But I noticed in one of the renderings, it seemed like, seemed like there were bollards and stuff as if, I don't know, you had to be able to drive a fire truck through there or something like that. Is there, or is that just a sectioned off as a different kind of use?
Let me go to the plan. Hold on a second. I'll share my screen again.
But the idea is vehicles won't ever cross that thing in the middle there.
I'm going to share the plan. So, uh, let's see. So you're talking about on street. Oh, yes, yes, yes. Thank you. Okay. So yeah, so we did leave it, um, as a, it'll be a drivable space so that if there's a time where we want cars to be able to use it, we can. The, the, largely what we think that could be used for, we don't a hundred percent know how the school drop-off function will work yet. I mean, we know how it'll work, but we don't know how functionality, how it'll actually function. So whether, you know, cars want in the morning, do we leave it open so those cars can get out to Mustang Alley, um, instead of going up lane four? It will be drivable, but the thought is that 95% of the time it will be closed.
Yeah, we could also allow you to close off half of the street that lets the let cars circulate.
Exactly. Yep. Yeah, we wanted that flexibility. Exactly.
And I just thought of this also with that, one of the shots where you, that you showed the stairs. And I guess this is, makes sense, but from that garage, you'll have pedestrian bridges on each floor. That's kind of cool.
Yeah. So the, I can go to that image. Let's see, right here. So, um, yeah, so that's a great question. We haven't decided if it'll be every floor or every other floor. That's, um, something we're still working on. But the, yeah, this, it'll be this kind of cool element that you're walking through and then going under as you come out towards routes, uh, towards the commons. Uh, but most of that space is open air. So it'll be a, a nice space.
Cool. Yeah. I don't, I don't have anything else. I mean, obviously you guys have been, uh, the thing has evolved dramatically from like the very early versions, but seems like, um, usually it's getting a little better. Obviously, always dealing with whatever challenges you're facing. So, uh,
Thank you.
Hopefully, hopefully, you know, the virus will be gone this time next year. You guys will have your financing and the ball will be rolling, but.
Yep.
It's getting pretty late. Uh, does any commissioner have any like question that popped to their mind, uh, since they had their chance to ask originally that we could do quickly? Or maybe everybody fell asleep already?
I, I had a question about actually one of the voluntary concessions in the S E E. I'm struggling to find it right now, but I think there was a, an amendment made to the S E E to the effect that, um, Falls Church Gateway Partners can change the layout or the landscape, not the layout, that the landscape of the commons, as long as it's generally in conformance with the S E E. And I just wanted to understand sort of what the, it, it seemed like language that was a little bit of a, a, a sort of an escape clause. And I just wanted to understand that a little bit better and understand the process for, you know, engaging with city, the city on any changes to the commons.
So Amy or Karen, do you guys, do you happen to remember what that voluntary concession was referring to?
Yeah, I'm not sure which voluntary concession that is. Um, I'm pulling it up right now.
My thought, yeah, Karen, go for it.
And I, and I don't really remember, but it, did it maybe just have to do with like seasonal landscaping or something? You're having some like flexibility?
I copied the text and I didn't, I didn't know what line it is, but the text is owner reserves the right to revise the streetscape around building D1 and amend the amenities in the commons via an administratively approved addendum to the S E S P, so long as the design is in general conformance with the original S E S P approval.
Yeah. So that is what that is. So, so it's two things. Um, as part of the placemaking amenity plan, there is a landscape section that shows images and photos of types of landscape that we might have. And, and this is a project where likely there will be seasonal, seasonal planting. We may change it from, you know, two years, three years, four years in, we may decide to go with allium instead of this, or, um, with the idea of trying to create, you know, something exciting and different and new over time. So that is, I believe that's what that was.
Evan, I think it's actually due to the senior building being a little bit behind us.
Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. So the plates, so, okay, I take it back. Go for it.
Yeah.
If we haven't done that, we should do it for the others.
Yeah, I, the, the, um, the intention is that the senior building is, uh, a couple of months behind us in the S E S P process. So I think that the intent of this was to reflect that, um, the streetscape final design around the D1 building might need to be adjusted based on the final design of building D1.
I guess I was more in, um, concerned about amending the amenities in the commons. I had a question about what that might mean.
I assume that's what I was, what I, what I was talking about.
Okay, okay.
So, um, anyway, let's do this. Let us talk as a team and understand, and then we can respond to that. Just put that in as one of the questions from the commission and we'll make sure we respond to it. I believe that was the intent though, that we would have some flexibility.
No, I think it's a combination of what I said and what Evan said is.
Okay, okay.
The first, the first phrase is because of the senior building and the second phrase is because of seasonal changes to the common.
Yeah.
All right. Anybody else? Looking at, I did 10:30 here. I'm ready to wrap this up if everybody else is.
Yeah, me too.
Not that time or days make any difference anymore, but.
Right, exactly.
Just sleepy. All right. Well, thanks everyone. Uh, I guess this concludes our meeting.